Let's bring this. Let's call this meeting to order. Welcome to the Scioto Township Board of Trustees Meeting, June 24th, 2025. This, it's 7:00 PM. Clark Flintoff, please call the roll. Carrie?
Present.
Yable?
Present.
Flintoff, present.
Grant?
Here.
Noel?
Here.
Reed? Reiser?
Here.
Also present, Office Coordinator Kristi Akin and Township Attorney Mariah Thang.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I believe to see the plan. I mean, I have to give it a clear. To the Republic, we stand in congregation under our privilege as all the liberty and justice.
Adoption of the agenda.
I have a proposed amendment.
Clark Flintoff, go ahead.
I would propose that we change the following. The designation of N1, that was my heir, should be designated as possible action instead of discussion only. I would propose that we move K6 and K7 off of consent and to place K6 and K7 after O6. I would also propose that we move the order to accommodate our staff who are here to ensure they can get home earlier. And for that reason, would propose that we move O7, 8, 9, and 10 after O2.
Would it be possible to move those to after N2 because that's when we're talking about the other job description?
Sure, John. Anything's possible, anything the majority of the board wants to do. The reason why I wasn't proposing that was O1 and O2 involve Brandon, and that would allow him to go home, whereas Aurora has more items.
Okay.
Anyone else? Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as amended?
Support by Reiser. I move the agenda as.
I'll support.
Discuss.
Did you get that?
Yep.
Reiser and Reed.
Reiser and Reed.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose? None, motion passes. Seven to zero. Is there a declaration of conflict? Okay. Moving on to correspondences received. There, there's quite a few in the packet. Is there any more?
I would just like to note, while I was out of town, the packet was helpfully updated, but just want to make the record clear that this is correspondence received between June 8th, June 14th, plus the correspondence from Renee Smallwood of June 17th. Anything that came in subsequent, I'll include in the next packet. I would ask that the board pay particular attention to the notice we got from Pittsfield Township and would ask that during reports if Kathleen Brandt or Kathy Noel, whoever knows, if the Planning Commission has a plan to interface with Pittsfield on that request.
Okay, moving on to public comments. This is the time for the members to speak to the Board of Trustees for up to five minutes on any matter. We usually start with anyone that's in the audience, and hi, Tom.
Hello. Thanks for, what do you mean first? Good evening, my name is Tom Offe, and my wife and I have lived in Scioto Township for over 32 years at 8151 West Liberty Road. As Scioto's delegate to Washtenaw Regional Resource Management Authority, or WARMA, as Chairman of the Scioto Township Zoning Board of Appeals, and as an election inspector, I've had the honor of working with most of you on the township board, as well as township attorneys, Carlisle Wardman consultants, and with most of the staff in the township offices, and I dare say, most of the past staff, and all of the past supervisors during that period of time. I've attended many board meetings over the last 32 years, and as I get older, the more I dislike coming to the board meetings, as I will explain. But first, I'd like to thank Kathleen Brandt, Julian Carey, John Reiser, and especially Kathy Noel for the recent interest which they have shown various issues which have arisen at WARMA involving attempts to create a regional waste hauling contract, recycling discussions, and priority waste problems. Ms. Carey and I communicate regularly, and I have consulted with Ms. Brandt, who also has attended zoning board meetings and WARMA meetings, and Mr. Reiser, who I've always found always asks questions that go to the heart of the issues, and Ms. Noel, who I have begun to know well, particularly since she also sits on the Zoning Board of Appeals and has attended meetings with me on WARMA issues and priority waste issues, and has gone out of her way to gain insight into the waste hauling industry. I should mention that Jessica Flintoff and I have worked together on elections for several years. I can't remember how many, but it was a couple, more than two.
Yeah, maybe five.
And she always gives me direct responses whenever we run into each other and have a question. And David Reed and I worked on elections together when he was a precinct captain. And even though since his recent reinstatement to the board, we have not had an opportunity to discuss much, I have no doubts, he has retained his prior sincerity to his board responsibilities. Finally, I should mention that Ryan Yable and I have spoken a few times about matters across the counter at the township offices. And although I don't know him as well as the rest of you, I like his attitude so far. I just don't want him to tell me I hadn't paid my property taxes. But in the recent past, I have found that my distaste for attending board meetings has greatly increased. Even when I was practicing law for 34 years and had to deal with opposing attorneys who were sometimes quite obnoxious, and judges who were sometimes difficult, for the most part, we acted towards each other in a civil manner and usually expressed ourselves, at least in public, in a respectful manner. But I guess I never developed the skills needed to deal with small-town politics, which at least in Scioto Township has resulted in public comment at meetings in a manner which I consider to be repetitive, personally insulting, emotionally unchecked, vitriolic, and unprofessional, and oftentimes not intended to be persuasive, but rather vindictive. And all of this while prolonging meetings which go on forever, which discourages a lot of us who watch from a distance from attending these meetings and trying to make a point on some issue or another. So since I've always felt that sometimes complain about something that someone should have a proposal to make an alternative, I shall do so. I propose a new Scioto Township amendment to its ordinances which just might have a tendency to minimize the abusive verbal behavior of Scioto residents to each other. I propose that the township expressly permit and regulate the time-honored American tradition of dueling. As a suggestion, I think limiting dueling to that one half hour after dawn in the flying field just beyond the township offices, using only single-shot pistols, and with only participants, their seconds, and approved, one approved neutral witness who shall make a short written report to the township board would work quite well. In this way, I think the practice would have the effect of encouraging civility amongst and between residents who would thus learn to deal with one another in a respectful manner, or would reduce the problem over time through attrition. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you so much, Tom.
Thanks, Tom. Anyone else in, present? Spars. You don't have any club.
Kristi?
Yeah.
First up is Jonathan Greberg, followed by Rob Pattinson. Go ahead, Jonathan.
Where do we sign up? Is there a sign up yet? I'm just kidding. I kind of like the idea. But maybe paint guns? All right, thanks. Very entertaining, Tom, thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan. Next up is Rob Pattinson. Go ahead, Rob.
Thank you, Rob Pattinson, Scioto Township President. We were driving by the new dealerships on Jackson the other day, and the Lithia dealerships, and the Mercedes dealership is nearly finished, the BMW dealership is in process. And for months now, the third lot has been, they've been working on foundations and doing a lot of bulldozing and such. And now, that third lot is smoothed over and seeded. So there is not going to be any building going on there. I understand that Jaguar pulled out of the United States. So my question is, how does that affect the Lithia PUD? If they're not going to complete the construction that they agreed to as part of their PUD, does that change the terms of their PUD? And are they not in compliance with some aspect of that? So that's an open question to all of you. For the last three or four years, many of the people on this board and many residents have been asking about a forensic audit for the township. And many of you ran on the idea of, let's get a forensic audit and figure out where all the money went. And we're now eight months and four days into your new term, and we haven't heard a peep about a forensic audit. So that's another open question to all of you is, what is the status of the forensic audit we have talked about for years? And then lastly, is O10, the Director of Operations candidate, Esmot? As much as I respected Esmot in his interview at Township Hall, he was the only candidate out of 32 that got to the interview stage. And just like, I believe it was a massive mistake to base your decision to spend $1.57 million on the HVAC system based on one quote, I think it is another mistake to base your Director of Operations vote on just one person. I believe this needs to bring in a professional recruiting firm that can cast a wider net than we can at Scioto Township to bring in more people to compare with Esmot. I think it's important that you don't make the same mistake you did on the HVAC system with the Director of Operations in spite of the fact that I believe he was a very strong candidate. I believe that's called due diligence, and some on this board have a problem with due diligence, and we need to improve that process. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob.
Thank you, Rob.
Anyone else that would like to speak at public comment, please raise your blue hand. There are no hands raised.
Oh, yes, board member response?
Sure. Just two responses. One, general, would just, I think in particular, in light of Tom's comments, I want to thank Tom for his comments. A reminder of our rule to direct your comments to the board, please, or to board members instead of to other residents. Secondly, regarding Rob's note about the forensic audit, Ryan and I have both met with a potential auditor regarding the scope, and I am working on some internal research in order to inform that scope before readying a proposal for the board. Thanks.
I would make a comment about Lithia. As I recall, the PUD included two buildings with the option for the third. I could be wrong, but that's the way I recall it. And if they want additional development, they have to come back to the Planning Commission.
Is Land Rover, was it Land Rover? That was the other one, that Jaguar? Yeah, so Land Rover is no longer, or are they combined in it?
It was, my recollection is consistent with Kristi Brandt, that it was the two for sure, and possibly a third one in the future, maybe Jaguar, Land Rover. But it was the two for sure, without the, that's my recollection.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any other board member response? All right, let's move on to the approval of minutes of the June 5th, 2025 special meeting. We'll begin with that one.
I move their approval.
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? None? Minutes approved for June 5th. J2, approval of minutes of the June 10th, 2025 regular meeting.
I move their support. Theirs approval. I'll support, oh my goodness, thank you. I support them by moving their approvals. Thank you.
Reiser and Reed?
Yes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? None? Motion passes, seven to zero. Or approved, minutes approved, seven to zero. All right, consent agenda.
I move the consent agenda, except for the items that we hold, which I understand to be K6 and K7.
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? None? Consent agenda approved. Seven to zero. Regular and special reports. I have a few things. Turn the timer off. An announcement you probably heard, but just in case, Maple Road Bridge is, Foster Road, Maple Road and Foster Bridge is closed indefinitely. There needs some work, and as the last I heard, is that the Road Commission is searching emergency funds, approval of emergency funds, and they're searching for a company to fix it. And it's, yeah, they don't know when. Another thing is, it was announced that in 2026, Scioto Church and Z, they'll begin construction on a roundabout.
That'd be great.
It's just going to be a whole Z Road of roundabouts, it's going to be fun. Okay, and that's all I have. I'm sorry. Yeah, I had the timer set.
Got you.
Stop. Okay.
But sorry, go in order, I didn't know you had.
Treasure, no?
I'll go.
Yeah, well, I'm just going down the list.
Oh.
There's the DDA and then treasure.
Okay.
We're kind of.
Deputy Treasurer Foster and I have the tax bills ready. They're at the printer, so they should be in the mail either later this week or early next week. They'll be available Tuesday morning for anybody that wants to come in and pay their taxes, which we've already had five or six phone calls about. Quite interesting. I did have a question, I was looking at the Sheriff's Report, and I know we had spoken about this, I don't know if we know tonight, we can certainly find out. On the second page of the enclosed report, it says staffing six of eight deputies billable for six at the bottom of the second page?
Good catch, that sounds bad.
Okay, now we'll dig into that.
I don't, I don't believe we've gotten any bills, we can check that, because it really should not have changed from our eight.
Yeah, and we were at seven for a while, so I'm even more surprised.
But we've not changed any contracts, so until we do.
No, however, they did state, I mean, they're short, they're training, and that's why they're not, well, I don't know if that's why they're not doing the banking anymore, but they're going to, whatever we have, they're going to charge us for that, and not anything more, so they're not, but again, we have our contract. And Mariah and I, we need to review the contract, it's on our to-do list.
And maybe just Ryan and Rebecca, Mariah, you and me can just sit down at our next regular meeting to just look at it, because Rebecca does a really good job of tracking this stuff. But with the way the last contract revision went down, I'm concerned about what may be developing here.
Thank you very much.
Do you have anything for the DDA? Maybe.
Not at this point, we'll have a DDA budget amended budget, since the board didn't adopt the DDA budget in full. Our understanding is we have to re-present a budget that should be available on the July 8th meeting of the Board of Trustees.
As a proposed budget amendment to the Township's consolidated appropriations resolution?
Correct.
Well, no, because we, that hasn't gone in front of the DDA yet for us to look at and to adopt that possibly, right? Because we adopted the budget, but that didn't have anything to do with this proposal tonight.
Two different things. So the proposal upcoming on the agenda here a little bit would be completely different. This is the actual budget that the DDA adopted at its special meeting about a week ago.
Okay, just so we're clear.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay. Clark Flintoff?
Sure, a couple things. Upcoming meetings list I'm tracking, I just want to flag a couple things that have been on our TBD soon list for quite a while, establishing a committee to study Scioto utility system as we so moved on January 14th, 2025. Kristi and Brandon are running point on that. And also TBD soon, which has been on soon for a few months. Appointments of members to PPP and RAC. Certainly, you know, as people have their vacancies, Barb's doing a good job of noticing people, but as people have possible applicants, please encourage them to apply and bring any to the board as you wish.
Planning Commission?
The Planning Commission met last night. They are aware of the updates to Pittsfield master plan. It was not discussed. There is an awareness, it was in the packet, but we did not discuss it at all.
I hope and I trust you'll bring this, Kathleen, to make sure that we have a meaningful process to engage with them. I worry we may have missed that vote a little bit with Ann Arbor, but we are engaging with Dexter, I want to make sure we engage with all of our surrounding neighbors.
Also, the chicken ordinance is still in play. A number of people came forth. They like their roosters, and they want to be in compliance. It's true, it's all true.
There's a rooster in my neighborhood, I can hear it everywhere.
Yes, some residents want to have them, so.
Right.
Has there been any discussion about the size of the parcel with respect to chickens? How many chickens? And whether, if you want a rooster, then it should be ag, or you should have a minimum of so many acres?
Yes, that's part of the dimensions, is parcel size.
Any more chicken questions?
Along that lines, we do not get complaints on chickens in Scioto Township, so. No. The creatures. Well, sexes.
You know when that's likely to come? What the timing on that might be?
I expect it to come back at the next planning.
Okay, and then eventually Berkeley.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Kristi Noel, is there, there hasn't been a settlement update in a long time, is there anything?
Because nothing is happening. Basically, I mean, I've given a little bit of information, but.
The EPA hasn't made any decisions about placement of projects on the national priorities list. Everything's at a standstill with Trump in office, so, I mean, I don't have a lot that I can report on, because nothing has happened. I do have some other things to report on, though. So we're in a holding pattern. We have a card meeting next week, and we did have our meeting with Eagle, we have quarterly meetings with Eagle. We had the meeting, card meeting with Eagle last month. We spent most of the time talking about the PFAS in Scioto Township at the card meeting. So.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. You said you have other things.
Yeah, so today, we met with Trailwoods residents. Aaron Cohen, Camille, and then Matt Parks, Stacy Monte, Mariah was there, I was there, Kathleen Brandt was there, Laura Crips. I think I've got everybody. And it was a productive discussion. It won't resolve everything, we have more that needs to be done now. And Laura is going to be preparing a report for the board that we'll have at our next meeting, and we can talk about it in more detail. I just wanted to let everyone know that the meeting has occurred.
Thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Set?
Yes.
Okay, then there's a planning report, executive report. GCSI, actually, there's, I think there's two of the GCSI that came through. Let's see. Kristi, do you have anything?
I just wanted to report that the GO wells were supposed to be, the digging was supposed to start last Wednesday, but the rain delayed it. And as far as I know, it's supposed to start tomorrow, but we also have a, our bi-monthly meeting to get status on everything, so if they don't start, I should know more on Thursday.
Okay.
Correct.
And you just reminded me of something, so Park and Stabler, they are behind because of the heat, and I guess because of the rain, and it was supposed to be finished today. But as far as the lining and something else, so anybody listening, that's what's going on with that. But I did drive it a couple of times, and it's really nice, they did a good job so far. And I'm sure the neighborhood is happy that it's open. Okay, that's it for reports. Next. Oh, next would be N1, unfinished business, possible action presentation by actuary on other post-employment benefits, OPED, unfunded liability. Hi.
So I just want to welcome Kevin Nolke, he is our actuary we employ through GRS, who has done good work for us. He was postponed unexpectedly last meeting. We're glad you and your family are doing well, and really happy to have you here tonight. As you saw in the report, everybody knows these projections are available. This is based on our small retiree medical benefit that we made major reforms to in 2023 to limit our unfunded liability. And Kevin's going to review the projection. And Kevin's going to review the projection, I'd like the board to make sure they're comfortable. And then we'll be asking the board to, I will make the model motion to accept evaluation as prepared. Kevin?
Thank you. If it's possible to pull the report up on the screen, that might be helpful for board members, but if not, I can certainly talk through it as best I, best I can.
That's fine.
It, it is in the packet, so everybody has it in front of them, and also for those online, we're on Agenda N1, so everybody should be able to view it.
Okay, thank you. So a few years ago, like Jessica said, the plan was closed, and all the active members were moved out of the plan, and all that remained is the, at the time, eleven. And it was decided that because of A202, we're going to try and keep the plan at least 50% funded, so as not to dip to the 40% or below the 40% mark, which would deem it an unfunded plan in Michigan and require a corrective action plan. And so as we were working through that, we decided that 50% would be a good threshold, because we do these valuations every two years. And so if we were to target 40%, we might plan catch-up. We do 50%, and that gives a little bit of a room for adverse experience. So this is kind of the first valuation that we're doing where it's only retirees, and we're now looking to see how, how we did last time. Last time, we calculated the amount that the township should put in to theoretically put one amount in so they would grow with investment income, and then theoretically you could leave it there, because the intent is to pay the benefits outside of the trust. And so we have a lot of plans that do that, that same thing, where they have an amount that's in the trust and they don't use it as for anything. It's 50, 60, 70, sometimes less percent funded, so you're in a similar situation as to a lot of plans. Makes this plan a little different is that you are specifically targeting 50%. Typically, when we do these reports, we will show what the contribution, required contribution would be to target 100% funded, because that's typically an actuarial sound policy. So in the report, on page A2, first thing we show, in order to satisfy actual standards of practice essentially, is what it would take to get the plan to 100% funded. And so what we do is we take the unfunded liability and amortize it over eight years. It started with 10 two years ago, so now we're, now we're at eight. So theoretically, if you wanted to have the plan be 100% funded, you would contribute $15,829 a year for the next eight years. So that's just kind of for your information. On the next page, on page A3, it shows contributions for the 50% target. This year, the plan is 70% funded. So in other words, the due to experience, which I'll talk about in a second, we got to a point where the required contribution is zero essentially for the next two years, because you're already at your target. The bottom of page A3 discusses the key assumptions that we use for our calculations. So the main one is the assumed investment return, so the plan uses 6%. And so if in future years, the plan earns less than 6%, then theoretically, you might have to put in more. The 70% funded could come down to somewhere around 58%, to where you need to put in more money. We also have what we call utilization percentage, to say that the retirees don't utilize all their potential benefits. Our assumption is 75%. There's a, there's a chart in this report and a few pages that shows that the historical is about 50% over the last maybe five or six or seven years retirees used about 50%. So that 75% assumption is conservative. And then the, we call it the annual increase, the maximum reimbursement of the inflation assumption is 2.5%. And then we have mortality assumption is to say how long we think the retirees are going to live. How long are you going to have to pay those benefits? So each valuation, we go through and essentially measure the experience of those assumptions to see how we did. And then do we need to put in more money or not? So on the next page, on page A4, it shows that the present value future benefits to be paid for the 10 remaining retirees are $334,000. The valuation assets as of March 31, 2025 are $233,000. So the unfunded amount is about $101,000, which means the plan is about 70% funded. And so you're in a position right now where for the next couple of years, you think that you won't have to put in any more money for this plan to meet your funding objective. On page A5, it kind of goes over in words what the previous pages said in numbers. And so what we do every two years is talk about what, what experience happened. And so for the investment return, for example, it was greater than expected for the last couple of years, so we have a gain there. Retirement benefits increased more than expected, which we consider to be a loss. In other words, the, the stipend increased more than 2.5% for two years. And then retiring mortality, it was slightly less than expected, which is a loss. To say that we expected somewhere between one and two retirees to pass away, and we had one retired to pass away. And so that combined together kind of puts us at the 70% mark. And so what really stood out for this valuation was the investment return, greater than expected. That is what kind of propelled you to 70%. The other stuff, the other experience was kind of just noise compared to that for this year. Do the other comments talk about, you know, there were no plan provision changes? For the assumptions, we updated the assumptions to use. We typically follow the same assumptions as MERS. And so since they changed the assumptions, since we did a prior evaluation, we aligned our mortality assumption with theirs. And then changing liabilities was very, very small, about $2,500, so in terms of that sort of thing, it's kind of negligible. We have another comment just saying that the investment return assumption, again, is the most prominent assumption. And so if we don't meet the 6% return on average each year, then you could have to put in no money. And then the last comment just talks about Public Act 202, that the required form we typically put in our GASP report. One of the things that we use these numbers for, we use it to calculate the required contribution to fund a status. But then we also use this as kind of a springboard in order to use the liabilities to calculate what is needed in the GASP reports for accounting purposes, which is an annual requirement. So what's that saying is that since Public Act 202, the disclosure for that is also an annual requirement, we put that in the GASP report. So it's kind of separate from this report. And then the last page I was going to talk about briefly is page A6. I put together a projection this year, which is new, we didn't have this last year. And something I was a little unsure about was if the board intended to try and pay some of the money out of the trust if it got to be above 50% funded, if you wanted to use some of that funds instead of just letting it sit there potentially growing forever. And so what the chart does is attempt to show basically that since you're 70% funded, you know, this year, over the next couple of years, you will theoretically earn investment income on what's in the trust. And so you can pay out benefits for a few years. And the fund status will go down, but it will remain above 50%. And so the projection kind of shows that about, in around 2030 is when you would expect to reach that 50% threshold, where you might have to start putting in a little bit of money again to help with the investments to kind of offset projected benefit payments. So you don't have to do that at all, but I just wanted to illustrate if you did want to use it, you know, you essentially have five years' worth here where you could pay benefits out of the trust before it would come down to that 50% threshold. And then one other comment just at the top is this, that the plan is projected to have fewer than one retiree on average remaining in about 25 to 30 years. So theoretically, that's the timeframe that you're looking before the plan would not be needed anymore, before there'd be no retirees left. So theoretically, it would, in a perfect world, you would want the trust fund to run out when the last retiree passes away.
Mm-hmm.
And how many retirees do we have?
There are 10. There's one that passed.
Do we have an age-adjusted, so I see the mortality table you're using? Do we have an age-adjusted, like anonymized list of how old these people are?
We, so.
Maybe it's not a GRS thing, it might be a SIO thing that we probably have.
Yeah, so you said you wanted to know how old the retirees are?
We can give you that.
Okay.
We gave that report to them.
Okay.
Yeah, as of the valuation date, on page B4, it shows just like age ranges. We don't specify each one exactly how old they are, but the age range is anywhere from 60 to in the mid 90s or low 90s.
Oh, okay.
So with that, I was just going to ask if you have any questions for me?
Do you have a recommendation for something we do this year?
Specifically for, for what?
For, as an actuary tonight, therefore SIO Township Board should do nothing, should put more aside, should let it ride. I know, I'm not going to say it like that, but.
Right, I would say.
And I've got it promptly, obviously.
Yes, if you, if you approve the report, then the contribution for the next two fiscal years would be zero.
Right.
And then to consider possibly paying money out of the trust at some point in the future if it reaches a threshold that you're comfortable with.
Accept the report and not put any, any.
And I just reflect that the board's done a really good job. I know when I got here in 2019, I think we were on year, you know, I think we had three years of corrective action plans for this outstanding OPEB. So it was good that we fixed this, we did just kind of put in 70% to just get it fixed, but it's a good chance with our treasurer, I trust Ryan would come to the board with a recommendation if he ever thought, you know, we, we could move some money out of there. But the balance sheet for Fund 737 is attached there, so you can see the money is there.
Anything else?
I'd like to make the model motion to accept the valuation of the Township's OPEB liability valuation and reporting for fiscal year in '25 as prepared by Gabriel, Roeder, Smith and Company, so-called GRS.
Who said the support? No, oh, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? None?
Before we move off this topic, I, I personally want to thank the clerk who initiated all of this action a few years ago to get the township in compliance, as well as take care of our retirees. This is all her efforts, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jess.
Thank you, Kevin.
You ever need anything else?
Kevin.
Feel free to reach out anytime.
We appreciate it.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Hello?
All right. HR manager?
Yes.
So unfinished business or possible action? And to approve the job description of the project manager. And Christie had handed out the original version with some highlights and to compare with what is in the packet.
Correct.
I have a comment?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody, for your work, I know this was on our agenda four weeks ago, was tabled for further consideration. Thank you for the red line, Christie. My one comment and concern about what's presented before us tonight is the deletion of nine, 10, and 11 from the May version. I see that it got rolled up. Let's see, if I'm looking at what's proposed June 2025, those three clauses got rolled up into one very short sentence that seems to try to summarize it. And I think it kind of misses, it, it seems to have reduced the work expectations of this position by like 20%. I mean, there's a huge amount of work that we've simply removed from the project manager. And so I appreciate there, maybe there's problems with the language here or things, but, but the, the concepts, the main things are that, that one, this person is expected to support our zoning official. That was made clear in the last resolution we did regarding zoning official, in whatever way that is, I don't know if it's site compliance or not. And two, this entire position, a main function was to provide technical assistance, policy analysis, and support for compliance with the Open Meetings Act, at least as related to staff. So if you look at some of the committees, like Parks, where we didn't always have a staff person, we do now. LPC, where we have a consultant. And a couple of the others, as we implemented the new website and peak, and there's more and more of an expectation for all public records to be published online, we need that staff person supporting committees to get their information up. Otherwise, it just falls on our office coordinator, which is what happens now. And that's not a good use of her time. And, and more substantively, it really needs to be the preparation of reports and presentations. I'd like to see our committees be better informed. And not every committee has subject matter experts or people who are, you know, great at writing or have the time. And I do think it's important for the township to have some professional staff available to provide analyses to our committees. That's my comment.
Question.
Kevin?
Why did you remove those items, Aurora? What was your rationale?
So we reviewed, there were three of us that reviewed this in terms of the direction of where the project manager role could go. And it was decided that those items should be deleted based on a recommendation to delete them. Yeah, for example, let's see.
Who, who met?
Sorry. It was Christie, Aurora, and myself, that's what we had approved at the meeting. And the zoning, the zoning and compliance, I thought that we did include that. We just moved it, didn't we? That's what I remember.
It's deleted.
Well, okay. So I thought it, I just remember, because they're projects, they're projects, so zoning would fall under that, right?
Yeah, I mean, we've had different titles for it, but yeah, projects are very broadly defined.
And so what does, what does technical support mean?
Well, technical assistance is a term I think I used, I don't know if it's in here, but for, for example, let's say that the, you know, there's very simple things. And I know our project manager is doing some of the things like printing financial reports from BSNA for the LPC, you know, helping with Zoom when committee members are uncomfortable. But what I really expect of this position is that they do analyses, for example, the transit committee, the LPC, if PPP needs help, if roads needs help, there should be somebody who can draft a policy, who can say, hey, what's the status of this legislation, draft a legislative memo. Somebody who can read, research, and, and provide data.
We have it in here. Gives technical advice to staff, volunteers, and others of the township in evaluating potential projects.
But specifically to the committees is, is my point, so I've had my comment.
Okay, all up here, we have it, we just kind of condensed it in the, under responsibilities. Provide regular technical guidance and content support, including staying abreast of current research and practice to assign committees, Parks, Board.
This is the current topic.
Where, where are you reading this?
You're reading the old one.
You're reading the old. Yeah, this is the old one. The one you have in your hands, anyway.
No, this is the old one.
Nope, that's the new one.
So this, this.
One in your left hand is the brand new one.
So this is. This is the.
The one from a couple of years ago is first.
Oh, wait a minute, I'm sorry, the one, okay, that's, no, I, we did have this one here.
So I, I've, I've made my comment, I won't repeat myself, I'd, I'd be open to tabling this or sending it back or voting no, whatever the board decides.
So, just a general question. Person in this position, I know has been assisting Laura with administrative reviews.
Right.
I think that's a function we want to keep.
I wonder if we want to go back to the May 27th version we all have in hand?
I thought we had condensed, that's what I remember when we were looking at it.
I have a question. If these activities or these responsibilities were deleted from a project manager, to whom were they assigned?
No. Well, go ahead. You know where they were saying?
Christie, number one was assigned to Office Coordinator Agnes.
The VAC system.
Each VAC system specifically, correct. Nine, 10, and 11, I don't think were assigned to anyone specifically.
They're not being done.
Okay.
That's an issue.
Yeah, but it was, I remember us talking about that, and there was something about the zoning and the planning that just went hand in hand, and I thought that, I remember us talking about that. And as far as, you know, support to the committee chairs and the Open Meetings Act, that should be. every committee should be versed in Open Meetings Act, and the chair should be upholding that.
But it's the record keeping requirements and, and it's the technology. So certainly, everybody should be aware. But sometimes people need help with Zoom. I don't expect everybody to learn how to use our website. That's a function our staff should provide.
And sometimes people need refreshers on the Open Meetings Act.
Sure. Yeah, um, and then, uh, so the technical, well, as far as the minutes and agendas and whatnot. So you expect the project manager to upload the agendas in minutes to the Granicus?
If, yes, if there is a volunteer who is not a staff person, I expect the project manager to handle that, um, for a committee. It's only one or two committees that that's the case for, that we don't have assigned staff. Because right now it's me or Christie, um, because the project manager isn't carrying this out.
All right, well, let's re- review it again, I guess, or let's take a vote.
I wonder, would, would the board be amenable to going back to, are the only changes substantive changes here, the, the things in yellow, Christie?
Correct.
Okay, I would make a motion to adopt the project manager job description dated 5/27/25, the OT meeting, with the, with, with the deletion of number one from essential job functions while retaining numbers nine, 10, and 11, and to number 10 to add to the first sentence, partner with committee chairs to develop board-approved projects and guide, continue.
Support.
Number 11? Support committee chair. Any committee chair?
No, here, number eight.
We're back on the.
Right, right, but in number eight on the, in the job descriptions is partner with committee chairs to develop board-approved projects. This includes preparation of reports and presentations to committees.
I saw committee chairs with the mess, but didn't we just go back to number?
With the mess.
Correct, we're back to the 5/27 version.
Martin Yo.
One is for Brian. And you have it in your left hand there.
Um, is that any committee chair?
As needed, would be my suggested intent.
Yeah. Well, well, let's, and why don't we put in as needed? Because it kind of sounds like they need to attend every committee meeting.
It doesn't say.
Well, we could have as needed to make sure it's clear.
Yep. I would support that friendly amendment.
I'd support that. Yeah.
Okay.
Because the only reason I were saying that, because the previous section, number 10, partner with the committee chairs to develop, no, LPC, Roads Committee, and Transit Sustainability Committee, to which the project manager is assigned. So it sounds like he's only, he or she is only assisting with three committees.
Well, actually, no, the land preservation, we, um, had suggested a removing that because you already have, um.
These are three committees we don't have a staff person for. Besides this one.
I'm sorry, say that again, please.
These are the three committees we don't have an actual staff person, otherwise assigned to Parks, has Murphy, you know, planning, has, you know, Laura, has Fran. These are the only three that.
But each, each committee has a board member that should know how to run Zoom and do whatever if necessary. Or, you know, the guidance and especially LPC.
But uploading the video the next day, there's two people who do that, the minutes, all these documents, so things that are behind the scenes.
So the.
It's the record keeping.
So the project managers to upload videos and.
That has been an expectation in the past in a discussion, and that is the record of the meeting.
Okay, but that seems like that would be an, an office coordinator administration to do that, because we're paying this person to do all of this project management. That's why I was confused about what does a project manager inside a township actually do? What kind of projects? What is that definition? But uploading agenda items and whatnot doesn't seem like it's a project.
I would move to call the question at this point.
Support. Would people like me to reread the motion?
Yes.
Motion by Flynn Talk, support by Yable, to adopt the project manager job description dated 5/27/25 with the deletion of the essential job function number one, keeping number nine, keeping number 10, though editing it to first sentence as amended, comma, partner with the committee chairs to develop addition, board-approved projects, continuation, and guide the work of, et cetera, and keeping 11.
So we have a motion on the table to call, to call the question. We need to vote on that?
There's no discussion, we must vote.
Okay, real powerful. Go, please.
Per our rules of order tonight, we're starting with Yable. Yable?
Yes.
Flynn Talk, yes. Brandt?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Reed?
No.
Ryser?
Yes.
Carrie?
No.
Motion adopted, five to two. Thank you, everybody, for your work.
Oh, um, oh, I'm sorry, nope, you, you, I thought you were next, but no, it would be Brandon, sorry about that, Aurora.
You got excited there, you're gonna leave early. Hi, Brandon.
Hello.
So we are here at oh one, possible action authorization of pipeline management to perform sewer main rehabilitation.
Any board, uh, I do also have Matt Parks on today as well, if, uh, these ready, in case we don't. Okay. So, um, last year, we started off with our first year of sewer TV and cleaning work. That's been done in quite a long time. We've had a steady cleaning program, um, previously with the Vance Underground. But we haven't had any video work, um, done of the entire system for quite a while now, so that's why I proposed that to the board. With that videoing of the sewer main, we get a detailed look at our sewer main conditions. Specifically looking at our first phase, which was down in the Walnut Ridge subdivision area in the Upland District area. We had the video footage reviewed by OHM as part of their previous contract that they signed with us when we initiated this work. Based on those recommendations by OHM, the original quote came in from pipeline management of $317,000. Understanding that, um, this year in the CIP that was approved, we only approved $100,000, which was our best estimate of what kind of repairs we could expect, uh, given the age of the system and, uh, and the general idea of how, you know, how well was maintained in the past. It was maintained, um, really well, and it's still relatively a new system. So that was our best estimate. However, it did come in at 317,000. So, um, I asked pipeline management to give us a new quote based on just the medium and, and high-risk areas that are needing to be done. This lowered the amount down to 194,000, which is still over, but, uh, with them being medium-high risk, I thought it was necessary to bring this to the board and let you guys decide if it's too much or not. Um, I realize, again, it is, it's going to be over $100,000 more than what we did approve. However, medium-high risk are, of course, something that's a little bit more serious. There's a lot more leak happening, um, with groundwater getting into our system that we're paying for. More damage to our pipe that could cause, um, sewer backups and, among other things, or more costly excavations to repair it with a new pipe. So considering that, I thought it was appropriate to bring to the board. In collaboration with the OHM, we did recommend a 2.5% uh, performance bond to be added to this uh, amount of 194,720, which brought it to the new updated document that I set on your desk. I was waiting for that for a while, of 199,588. And then, based on another recommendation, um, from OHM, was a 5% contingency, just in case something comes up with that we're not aware of, this does happen in this type of work. So it's just there, um, doesn't mean it has to be used, uh, which brought the total amount to 209,567. And, uh, understand that there was a question about the contract or the proposal, as there was mentioning of some traffic control on the Jackson Road, road. Um, and that was, um, we had a sinkhole on Jackson Road when the, uh, concrete was being redone. Um, we have a manhole structure in that area that's just in front of our pump station. Uh, we had a hole in our, um, manhole structure, or is it very bottom where the channel is, that was bringing in a tremendous amount of groundwater that we were paying for, that has subsequently been injected and had stopped leaking, but there was further recommended, recommendation by OHM to have that entire manhole line. So that is something that I am also recommending that we even approve in this work as well. It's cheaper to bundle more things, um, opposed to independently, um, getting this type of work done. So that would be added into this work would be, uh, the traffic control in order to, zone off that area temporarily to line that entire manhole to make sure we protect it for the future. So that's kind of a, a summary of, of what we have, um, for, for year one of the sewer, sewer rehabilitation work.
So I, I'm gonna.
Steve, Brandon.
I'm gonna tag on to, uh, what Clerk Fentoff said. Are you suggesting that what you laid on the table is the current quote?
Yes.
Well, the date is February 15th.
Understand.
It can't be the 15th. You can't have the same quote with the same date and the same. You, you said that they gave you something recently. That should be the date on the document.
I understand, but that's what I was provided. I've been in constant communication with them. I can assure you that the quote is good.
No, you need to ask them for an updated quote with the date on it, the proper date on it. That's what I'm asking for. That's just good practice.
Understand.
Clerk Fentoff.
Yeah, thank you, Brandon. I support this. I just have an outstanding question for our township attorney about if we were to make the model motion to authorize this, given that we have a quotation and not a contract. I also had questions if this maybe should be, if we're gonna enter into a contract instead of a quote, or if this is the agreement, and if we should make our approval subject to review and approval by township attorney.
Get to the quote.
This is actually just handed out here. You can have a confirmation. I didn't know if, it, it wasn't indicated in the item if you'd yet had a chance to review it and approve as to form.
I think I have. Yeah, I believe I have. I mean, I, I don't, I don't have a problem with this format necessarily, but we could ask for something different. You can approve it tonight, subject to, uh, a different document that I would review and approve. That makes more sense. You could also approve it tonight, subject to a quotation with a current date.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think we should, or you can pass it and we'll get it next time.
I like Mariah's second idea.
I would comment too. Sorry to interrupt, but, um, you are also already have them under contract for your as-needed televising and cleaning contract, so there's probably language attached to that, that you could use the base agreement for, and Mariah should, I would recommend Mariah look at it, um, regardless, but that, there's probably already an agreement that you guys have, and a lot of that language could apply here as well.
The first, yeah, the sewer TV cleaning, um, and jetting contract is, is, it looks exactly like that. I'm sure it had the correct date at the time, uh, on that one, though. And I, I do fully understand the board's, um, wanting that to have the correct date on there, and that is an easy fix before I could have Christie sign off on it, if that's what the board chooses to do.
I have a proposed motion.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize pipeline, pipeline management to rehabilitate Scioto Township's sewer mains in an amount not to exceed $209,567 from sewer fund, 590000973, subject to the review and approval of all authorizing, of authorizing documents by the township attorney. Period.
I'll support.
We have Flint off to Noel.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? None, motion passes, seven zero.
Thank you, board.
Thank you.
And, um, Brandon, uh, we're on to oh two, possible action authorization to use sewer funds to relocate two private sewer leads.
Yeah, so, um, when I arrived here, um, our field supervisor, of course, runs, uh, usually runs the day-to-day workflow. So it was told to me right away that this is a area that we, or manhole structure that we have been checking for the past five years, um, monthly, to ensure that the sewage content from 6023 and 6020 Gabriel are entering the sewer main. Not that it can't happen this way, but it, it is a little bit different of a setup. The private leads, sewer leads fall into a manhole structure that have concrete channels that flow into the actual sewer main. Typically, you will see private sewer leads connect actually just right to the sewer main. And so, um, this was something that we've been doing since I've been here, been routinely checking it every month. Recently, um, there was an issue that arrived so that, um, we, we went out there and discovered that checking it once a month wasn't, um, good enough, so we had to lower that to check it every week to make sure that we were, spraying some water in there and, and moving the sewer, sewage contents into the actual sewer main.
Light.
Yeah. So based on, um, workflow and, and stuff like that, it's not exactly prudent to be out there weekly inspecting the manhole and making sure the contents are actually making it into the sewer main. Um, it could lead to other, um, issues for the township, so what I did is I, I got with a couple of contractors at first and got their opinion on the situation. Ultimately, I got with OHM as well, and OHM has their letter of recommendation, um, in the board packet agenda. So basically, what we're recommending in order to alleviate the issue, um, that we currently have and to fix it is to, um, remove, basically, um, remove the two private leads that are flowing directly into the manhole and, and reroute them so that they actually enter right at the sewer main. And so, so that's, that's what we're proposing here, is to just reroute them, um, to the actual sewer main. In order to do that, um, OHM has recommended us to pothole the existing utilities in the area so that they can get a better understanding of the elevations of each utility. This will help give them, um, guidance to the three contractors after we pick somebody out that will be doing the work. We can give them some professional guidance on the exact elevations that we need certain, uh, or exact elevations of where certain utilities are so that they can, um, put their sewer lead in correctly the first time and, and get that to where it needs to be.
Can I ask you a couple of questions?
No. No.
I'm sorry. Oh, wait, I'm sorry.
Because you.
My apologies.
Go ahead. I hit something, but go ahead.
No, no, I can, I can wait.
Well, Brandon, I, um, so this is in a French country estate, and it's, there's two houses or two parcels that are connected to this manhole?
Yep, two parcels that have independent private sewer leads that are connected to the same manhole.
Okay, so this sounds like it was a development issue, where, when the development was created and somehow the, is any other parcels within that development or, um, neighborhood connected to manholes?
I don't know that, um, directly. I don't have, um, enough field experience, uh, to a- answer that question right offhand. I'm sure, um, our field supervisor, or, or we can just pop more manholes in there. I would say that at the time that this was built, I'm sure that this was a okay standard to follow. And just over time, this is something that has slowly, um, been walked away from. And I'm not sure if this is the direct result of these certain situations. And I'm not sure if this is the direct result of these certain situations like this. I'm sure Matt could attest um, more, um, a little bit more to that on, you know, why this isn't quite the standard anymore.
Okay, and there have, are there, have there been other um, complaints in that?
Nope, this is the only uh, manhole that we check um, for. Like, we, we do monthly or weekly inspections to make sure that the sewage is flowing appropriately um, for residential sake um. Everything else is, is uh, we have some hotspots from, from grease issues that we check monthly. Um, here on Zeb Road, uh, we have uh, not, not a grease issue, but kinda like a pottery mix issue going on on Meddy Drive. Uh, that we're keeping an eye on. So there's some other ongoing issues um, but nothing that is causing this type of issue uh, as of right now.
Cause this is a lot of money um, to, you know, for two parcels, but.
Yep.
Trustee Reeder.
Thank you. I'm sorry to interrupt earlier. Um. So you think these are the only ones in Country French, right?
I know for sure right now that these are the only ones that are um, giving us trouble in Country French. I can attest to if there's other private leads that flow right into a manhole structure uh, in Country French or other areas of Scioto Township. I just know that over the past five years that this is something that we have routinely checked. And there's no other areas that are like this that we have to routinely check.
In Scioto Township or in that section?
In Scioto Township.
And, and was this done because it was code at the time, or was this done by somebody taking shortcuts if you or Matt know?
I think Matt would be able to answer that question a little bit better.
Yeah, I don't know. This was predates uh, O H M's involvement or really any full-time inspection happening. But one thing you should know, like, it, it isn't necessarily uncommon to have a sewer lead tie into a manhole. The problem with this one is it's a high-end manhole, so the very end, like a dead end. So there's no upstream flow coming through. So if there were, like, say ten or twelve houses upstream of this, and there's this problem, that would help flush it down. Um, but there's no flow coming, so this is definitely poor practice on a, on a high-end manhole. It, I, part of ten state standards, part of Scioto Township's engineering standards that were developed in two thousand and five and are currently getting revised. Um, wouldn't allow this, so um, I can't really comment how, why it was all done. Um, typically in subdivisions, um, the whys are installed off the main and then stubbed to the property and then the houses connect. So right now, we have a system where this wouldn't be permitted and really there's no way for this to happen. Um, the only time you'd ever have a manhole was, is if Scioto requires on commercial buildings where you'd have a monitoring manhole. And that's just a C, and you'd see the flow coming through, so.
We do have those.
And you, you mentioned potholing. You, you're gonna perform exploratory potholing. What, what is potholing? And where will that process occur? Only in this given area or throughout Country French?
Understand. So um, we're gonna use pipeline management as we have a contract with them. So this will be the same size hole typically as what we use for um, hydro excavating the curb box areas that, to understand what kind of service line material it is. So it should be like a ten-inch round hole and we'll be doing it just within um. Probably forty feet of each side of each house um, by sixty nineteen Gabriel, which is uh, that's that manhole is, is directly north of that. So they're gonna have to connect to the sewer main um, just east of sixty nineteen Gabriel in order to get those leads that enter the sewer main. So it should be about the size of, you know, two house or two parcels that we're gonna find the gas, the A T and T line. Um, water and sewer will verify, verify the depth of those. Um, and those are the most common utilities and uh, and those are the ones that we'll be hydro excavating to figure out the depth of them.
Well, this is a one-off. This isn't something you're gonna come back every year or whatever, cause Country French has another one of these.
All I can say is I know of, as of right now, um, through the experience of the field supervisor myself, as of right now, we have no other manholes that are having, that are like this, that we're having any issues with.
Well, Kirk Flintoff, you had her hand.
So I'm, I'm supportive of this. I just want to um, improve the record of this meeting and the final record of the, any motion we might adopt on this. To make very clear what the public purpose is of this. Okay, so, you know. You know me, Brandon. I love that. Authorize, authorization to use sewer funds to, for, it's not for a private purpose, it's for a private sewer lead. But we need to state the public purpose very clearly. And I know it's there, I know it's to improve our um, the overall functioning of our public sewer main. But as our operator, could you please articulate what is the public purpose? The improvement to our public system to justify why we're using public funds for this purpose?
Understand. So when the sewage flow from both of those private um, sewer leads enter into our manhole structure, it hits a concrete channel. Though a, again, as Matt stated, there is no flow to help those contents actually get into the sewer main. So those contents are being held up in the public concrete channels just before the sewer main. And for that reason, and to alleviate any other sewer backups that could or may potentially happen in the future. It is my best recommendation and O H M's recommendation that we reroute the private sewer leads to actually connect to the sewer main. Instead of connecting to a manhole structure that dumps out into a concrete channel that doesn't have good flow, that doesn't allow it to get into the sewer main. Um, and that's the reason why we're making the recommendations is to alleviate the issues on the public side.
And, and I'd add, I'd add to also reduce your ongoing regular and increasing maintenance and having to go out there on a weekly basis with staff. And use your own resources to deal with a nu, a nuisance problem.
Yep.
Between trustee Brandt and trustee Reed, who had their hands up?
It does, it doesn't matter. Um, Randy, can you remind me, um, who is the acting field supervisor now? We just went through that exercise too.
It, it, it currently is still the same person.
Okay.
Yes, you read. How, I'm curious, how did this problem come to your attention?
So uh.
Was there a backup or something?
Correct. So there was an uh, like again, this has been an ongoing um, field work that's been assigned to field techs um, far, far before I was ever hired here. So this was just something that was ongoing that we would watch and help uh, flow into the sewer main. And then um, I don't have the exact date on hand, but we did get a call from sixty twenty-three Gabriel where they said that they had a sewer backup incident. Um, so uh, our field techs responded and checked everything out. I went and talked to the homeowner. I went and investigated the situation myself. Uh, spoke with the field supervisor to get more background on the situation of why we've been doing this monthly and not um, getting a permanent fix figured out. Um, so this, I believe, would be the second incident that this homeowner had. The one would be when we first started doing the monthly checks years and years ago. There hasn't been any other sewer backup that I can recall other than the one that we had probably a, a month or so ago now, two months ago now. And so all I, all I did was, is understand that there's an issue and I wanted to address it and get a, and see if there's an actual fix to this to make sure that. We could resolve the issue and that's why I asked some contractors in O H M to investigate it and help us out a little bit to determine. If this was more of a public issue or, or a private issue, so I could determine um, what direction I needed to go, whether I needed to speak with the homeowner on having them. Fix their private sewer lead, or if I needed to bring something to the board here um, in order to get this fixed properly. And this is just kinda ultimately where it led to.
And this, the cost of this comes out of the sewer fund?
Correct, sir.
Hmm. And there, it looks to me like, you, you mentioned there's tree removal. It looks to me like there are two trees gonna have to be removed?
Right now, it's, I, what they did was provide a, a rough estimate of what they think is, is the, the cost is actually gonna be um. What will happen is I'll end up getting three quotes from vetted um, contractors that do this underground work. Um, and then I'll look at those with O H M and we'll determine who we think is best appropriate to bring to the board. And they'll have their actual quote at that time for us to look at and uh, and then that's what we'll actually use, you know.
That's part of the reason of pothole too, like there might be a way to sneak the lead around without impacting the trees. We just, I think we provided that in the estimate just as a worst case.
Good.
Treasurer, you, oh, I bet you made your hand up. Anybody else? No, sure.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the township to allocate an amount not to exceed seventy thousand dollars from sewer fund. Five nine zero 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 nine three five for the relocation of two private sewer leads. At sixty twenty Gabriel Avenue and sixty twenty-three Gabriel Avenue for the purpose of improving the operation of the Scioto Township Sewer Main.
Support.
Would you add a amendment on reducing um, personnel costs associated with its maintenance? As part of the public purpose?
Are you, and sure, absolutely. I would accept that, David.
Yep.
So it would be to improve the operation and reduce the maintenance costs?
Personnel.
Or personnel? I, if you really think it'll do that, I don't, I don't think it'll do that.
Why not, Carol?
Yeah, no, I don't think so. Actually, I don't think that's true. I don't accept the friendly amendment. I, I just, I mean, I get your point, but we're not gonna reduce personnel costs. We're not gonna cut F T E.
Well, then, oh, I, I appreciate that.
About re, reduce service costs?
Reduce.
Um, improve efficiency.
Maintenance activity?
Sure, maintenance activity.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure, thank you. Are you good with that, David? Reduce maintenance activity? Okay.
Okay, so there was. Motion.
By Flintoff, support by Reed.
Um. I guess all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? None? Okay, motion passes, seven zero.
Thank you, Brandon.
Thank you, Board. Thanks, Matt. Guys, have a good evening.
Good night.
Thank you, Matt.
So there.
Okay, next, uh, she's me. Aurora, that, yeah, we're on to oh seven, possible action, approve the job descriptions for administrative clerk. Planning of, planning, then office coordinator, I T specialist, natural areas technician, and parks director.
Oh, yes, that's right. I would uh, just first ask a question. The administrative clerk planning proposed, which, which is, do we have the right version here?
So um, we are updating that, so I would ask that that be um, tabled.
Okay.
And I will put it back on the agenda for July eighth. Sorry, what was that?
I would make a motion to table the per, proposed position of administrative clerk dash planning until the next regular board meeting of July eighth.
Support.
Motion by Flintoff, support by you.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppo, oppose? Oh, no, um. Trustee, no, that, mark it out, but.
I did have a question about the office coordinator position. Um, there's a, um, it does, uh, the office coordinator position, I don't. It, it's a good job description. I know from day in and day out, it doesn't reflect. Um, I don't think enough of the duties that I know I rely on the office coordinator to do. And this is aside from any additional duties that the board assigned the office coordinator in the fall. Um. I, I do know we wanna move these forward, but wonder if we might also table that to kind of be developed a little more for two weeks? Would that set you back?
Sure, I, I'll put that down as tape. We'll review that.
What do others think about that?
Did you say sure? It will set, set you back?
No.
No, no, no. Initially, she said to table that to July eighth and, and absolutely um, I'll review that with Christie and with um. Supervisor and, and clerk and um, treasurer. I know that work closely with Christie um, in uh, so.
Yeah. I'd make a motion to table the office coordinator proposed job description until July eighth.
Support.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? None, motion passes, seven zero.
Um, with the I T's special, uh, yeah, I T specialist proposed.
Uh-huh.
Um, it says reports to the director of operations. However, the systems analyst, uh, uh, administrate assist.
Systems administrator?
Yeah, systems administrator says that the I T um, specialist reports to them.
Uh-huh.
Right.
Okay.
So if that's approved by the board tonight, then I would say that this would, would be an update that would need.
Okay. Well, should we wait to, until the systems an, administrator, because it's in the next um, G?
I.
Oh nine?
I, I wonder if we could just consider the I T specialist, um, keep it as reporting to the operations director. And maybe the board by consensus here could just understand that the reporting on this job description would change if we did approve for the next one. And we would defer to the H R manager to make that change.
Uh-huh.
Okay, what else is in here? There's Parks.
I, I did have a comment on I T specialist, though, on the maintains the badge access system. Um, you know, in terms of access, security, um, that's something that multiple people have different roles in. Um, our office coordinator maintains the keys for me as clerk. Um, and the key log, um, which is a record of the clerk, um, maintaining access to which, who gets access to which buildings. Which I think kinda goes hand in hand, so I just personally, that's the only place I see a security function. I would not put such an important security function on the job description of a I T specialist alone, which is currently what we have before us.
Okay, I would, I would say that could be included under H R also.
Agreed.
Under onboarding, so between Christie and I, if that's a change that you want to make to that. And we have been moving toward that anyway. I've recently been training on that system.
I think the I T might carry it out, but they're not the administrator of that function.
So would the, would your job description need to be updated to include?
I don't remember it right now.
I would say that would fall under other related duties.
Oh, okay.
Since it's part of a new hire.
Agreed.
Okay.
I would think number five also might need a small tweak where it has director of operations right now, should probably be. Tentatively agree to a systems administrator.
Okay.
With the, oh, for I T?
No, I'm, I'm done, no. Not just have a general comment, but one, if you continue.
Um, may I make a motion on I T specialist?
Oh, sure. Are we doing one by one? Okay, go ahead, yeah.
Are you comfortable with I T?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Okay, let's.
I, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the job description of I T specialist with the deletion of number nine. And with the understanding that should a system administrator position be created? That the reports to section and the reference to operations director and number five would be updated by the H R manager.
Is there support?
Support.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? None, motion passes, seven zero.
Okay.
I guess uh, next would be the. Parks director?
Natural areas technician.
Natural, oh, natural areas, okay?
Hmm.
Oh, wait, before, um, trustee Reed, you, you said you had something general to say?
Uh, I can wait. We can do this. Um, uh, it has to do with parks, so that's okay.
Okay.
Any questions on this one?
I would move to support natural areas technician as presented.
Is there?
Support.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? None, motion passes, seven zero. Now on to Parks?
Yep.
Director.
I just have a um.
I just have a general comment. The new format of the job descriptions is much more readable, I think, much more understandable than the prior version. Reading through these, the functions I think are well, are well spelled out. Reading through the Parks Director, I'm surprised she has time for lunch. And, and then looking at the approved positions, I'm shocked at her rate, and I certainly hope that that is being looked at, because I think she is definitely underpaid, and I think we need to do something about it. Some of these other positions, I think, well, I won't go there. So a lot of it has to do, I think, with seniority, but I think we we need to do something about that, so.
I share your concern about equity and agree.
Absolutely.
Wasn't that rate set based on her experience level at the time of hiring? And the, the requirements were three years supervisory?
I understand that, and it seems like we put more, and maybe this is by design, more weight on experience rather than education and effort, and that, that bothers me.
I think what we've done is inconsistent, David, and that bothers me. I, I think, I think we've used different factors at different times and, and so I'm really glad that we're going through this process of getting job descriptions and I hope the next step at a future meeting, maybe the next one or the one after, will be looking at classification is my understanding. Which is great.
And also performance reviews are in process, so that could make a big difference.
Though that's a separate, I, I don't, just to manage expectations, I don't think that we, we have said we're starting performance reviews without any performance-based pay at this moment until we do the classification, so I just want to manage.
Right, but it is in the works, so.
And I do want to acknowledge what trustee Reed said, that yes, wages are one of the things that are being looked at, as you mentioned, or Flintoff regarding equipment, so, yes.
Issues in, in, in several positions, David.
Okay, where we're. Parks Director, are there any other comments? Or questions?
Actually, I do have a question. I was recently reading about driver's license requirements. We just bought a heavy truck and a heavy trailer, and the gross vehicle weight exceeds ten thousand pounds, and I interpreted that the person operating that needed a chauffeur's license. Is that, does that ring a bell with anyone? It's a, it's a, it's a test administered by the Secretary of State.
It's a great question. I assume this came up at the last board meeting I missed, that when the board approved those equipment purchases?
No, we didn't know about that.
Darn.
It did not come up at the meeting.
So that would absolutely be a question that needs to be answered regarding the CDL and what type of endorsement?
It's not a CDL, it's a chauffeur. It, it's a lesser exam, I believe, so. If it's required, I think we should just.
The endorsement is like an A or something like that, so like drivers like, hasn't been A's.
So Christie and Aurora, you do research that for us and report back, and I just want to assure the public that it's not being driven yet until we know that we have proper licensure.
So I, I think the clarification should also be, is it the combination of the vehicle and the towed trailer? If it's not, then it's not needed.
And we would obviously help any staff will be driving to get the proper credentials, but not allow them to drive it until they have.
Anything else vote for parks? Parks Director?
I'll move the Parks Director.
Support. And I just want to say, this is, I know all the job descriptions have taken a lot of work, but I, I will just say this is one of my favorite job descriptions because it is comprehensive, and I appreciate that.
So did, um, did Murphy weigh in on the job description?
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, good. Okay, all in favor say aye. Oppose? None, motion passes seven zero. Did we do them all under?
We are on, yeah, oh eight. First one is grounds facility custodian.
Okay, oh eight, possible action, approve the job description for grounds facility custodian, utilities field technician, utilities field supervisor, and utilities director.
I had one comment regarding grounds. Okay. The scope of his responsibilities, it talks about facilities. We currently have two facilities, we're about to have three facilities. This rarely comes up, but I do think we need to be clear, do we expect him to, you know, provide maintenance for, say, the sheriff's side of the house that we own at the fire station, the other part of the fire station facility in the new, facilities of the new fire station. I, I just want to make sure the language, I don't have a particular suggestion, but I want to make sure that the language is clear that we would expect him, might expect him to maintain any township facilities. Some of the language seems to refer back to one facility or township hall. And I just want to be really clear that it's all of the township facilities. So even, you know, it says facility custodian, and I think that's kind of a, a relic of the, of the, the past. But this is a, a big job with a lot of responsibility. I also want to make sure that the possibility of fleet management. That, does the current proposed job description contemplate the possibility of assigning this person fleet management?
So if, well, they, they do, they report to the utility director, but if they're to clean or maintain the fire departments or the fire stations, then.
It, it's been an area where different people in this role have taken on a different scope, and I want us to be clear about what we expect.
Okay, so do we?
No, it does indicate in plural facilities within the job functions, it does indicate plural.
But Jessica, I take your point, it should be assigned somewhere. Fleet management should have ownership.
And, and I do, I do see Aurora, to the first point, vendors as needed to maintain township facilities. Like when we did the renovation of the police station, you know, we, we aren't always going to be so lucky to have a fire chief who, who can do that, okay? And we need to have somebody really responsible for all of it.
The fleet is under the Director of.
He did tell me that he's, he's currently managing that.
Who is?
Brandon? The, the fleet. I don't see why this couldn't be a consideration to add under this, but check with the grounds facility individuals, whether he has experience in this or et cetera, or.
And I just want it to be a possibility, like even if that function appears in both job descriptions so that we might assign it to one or the other.
No, this is the.
This is utilities director. We're bouncing between things.
I thought we were talking about the facility.
We, we are.
Yeah, right.
One, one thing I would bring up, I would try to add, let's add something in there about the multiple facilities. It is in six, seven, and eight of the essential job functions, but I could, I could propose number eleven maintains if all, or maintains all township facilities as directed.
Careful, because that include the water tower and the pumping stations?
How about all township buildings?
Okay, what was that wording again?
Maintain all township facilities as directed. I, I actually think that there's been times where we've had the grounds so custodian know some of those facilities.
Oh, that's, that's always.
All, I was gonna say always, or nearly always.
Howard, Howard used to allow parks, you know, driveways. I mean, this, this person's here to support the township.
Okay, that's fine.
I would just say to move that as item ten, and then I would just have that the famous performs other related duties as a sign as the last one.
I see under skills and abilities, valid commercial driver's license. Now, that's not that's not the one you're talking about. This is the one that drives, that allows him to drive a tractor trailer, is that what this is, a CDL?
I think chauffeur is up to fifteen people and over twenty-six thousand pounds, and over twenty-six thousand pounds and over sixteen people might be a CDL, but whatever.
Chauffeur license is ten thousand gross vehicle weight. I just looked it up.
Oh, thanks, I, I noticed.
There's a possibility that he would be driving other type of vehicles that require a CDL. So I think that's why that's in there. I don't know if necessarily there are any right now that fall under that, but there could in the future, so.
Should it say valid commercial driver's license as, when needed or as needed, because we don't, like you said, we don't have those trucks right now.
I believe we don't. I, I think that they.
The chair just exploded.
You all right? How's your back?
I don't know.
Is it like condom?
Um, I'm.
All right.
Christie, check your chair.
Thank you, thank you, everyone.
Well, we'll get that to the garbage.
Okay.
That was loud.
We were talking about license, CDL versus.
Ability to obtain a commercial driver's license and maintain a or, and maybe maintain a, maintain appropriate driver's licensure, something like that.
Yeah, and so, and send the other ones. Valid vehicle operator's license, satisfactory driving record, and the ability to maintain one throughout.
And I just want to note too, the number five manages and coordinates repairs or additions to building operating systems. Is there a reason why it's limited to operating systems? Instead of just, you know, building operating systems, renovation, repair?
I, I don't, I think the wording was just there, it says repairs or additions, I, yeah, I don't think that there was.
Oh, I see, six kind of covers it. Okay, that makes sense.
I was just gonna ask that question. What's an operating system?
Like the HVAC. I, I think, I think it's from, you know.
Our HVAC has an advanced computer system.
Okay, so that, you are talking about an actual operating system? A computer operating system.
I did not write this. I think that language probably came from the past when somebody didn't mean a computer operating system and just meant the electrical, the plumbing.
Air conditioning, so, okay. Building operating systems.
I would make a motion to adopt the grounds facility custodian job description with the amendments discussed.
But all in favor say aye. Oppose? None, motion passes seven zero. Utilities field technician?
But the one thing I thought was lacking here is the expectation, we've talked about this, we're having a new training on the utility billing module for everybody, including these folks, is the comfort and ability to use the SNA GIS apps technology, the basic technology needed to carry out their operations.
What would the utilities field supervisor be doing with BSNA?
I'm sorry, I thought we were talking about utilities field tech, but, but to both. The work orders functions, there's all of the work orders, all of that process that we're trying to automate. Certainly with all of the investment this board has made in GIS apps, we need to make sure that all of our people using it, who are the utility field techs, are able to use the technology that we are investing in.
So you would like to, under the knowledge, skills, abilities, and minimum qualifications, include that?
Yes, something, yeah, knowledge or comfort. It doesn't have to be BSNA, but certainly something more general. Knowledge, comfort with using computers and applications, some basic comfort with that. Whatever words you or Aurora thinks, just, I, I mean, because we're asking for very different skills, but we need people with both. Yeah, tablets, operating, you know. Competency.
Competency, competency with Microsoft Office. With computer systems or MS Office.
And BSNA.
Don't we have a Microsoft Office requirement across the board for all staff, so how do we accommodate that? Should that be in the employee handbook or something?
Well, I don't know that typically a system like that is in the employee handbook. I think that's more like policies, procedures, but I'm not.
But it can be in every job description.
Yes, and it, and it is in in quite a few of them, if not.
I think it should be in these as well.
And if they don't have that, but they have everything else, that would disqualify them from the job?
There's training.
Isn't that what we should provide after all of the issues we've had?
If we require it, which is what this process is about.
Yeah, preferred.
Preferred competency.
No, so they have.
Competency and all that's, and all that.
So they have to know Microsoft three sixty-five in order to get hired.
I'm talking about basic use of email. Using. That, that's what Brian suggested. I, I, again, I'm open to whatever language, but the truth of the matter is people need to be able to be basic users of doing an electronic work order flow, which is in BSNA, David. It's literally instead of handwriting work orders and handing them over to somebody else, typing them onto an iPad or a computer, responding.
Responding to emails, knowing how to use basic computers.
Well, okay. Knowing how to use basic computers is different than having the 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 knowledge of it coming into the job, I mean, you can. Somebody in a couple of days.
Sure, so.
Assume since it's so easy.
Propose some language.
May may I, um I wrote down two things, either competency with. M S Office, G I S application and and B S N A or uh working knowledge of.
Yeah, working knowledge of or ability to learn something, right?
I like the ability to learn part, I mean, because there's. We have the just in the same job description, if I didn't read it, the ability to obtain S four license within two years of hire date.
Right.
I think we need people that uh want to have some basic understanding of. Using a computer, I think would be helpful.
And.
Uh, and then we can train them on the specifics of G I S and B S N A within the first. Frankly, first month.
Yeah, first month, but David, what what I want to avoid is a situation. Where we have people who refuse to use computers.
Absolutely.
Because they never had to before, because technology is always changing, so that's the problem I'm trying to solve.
The whole good eggs.
Well, correct.
Correct.
Well, Microsoft Office. The calendaring features have been out there for no less than thirty years. That's gotta be a standard to start using calendars.
Agreed. Okay, so what is what is the language?
Aurora suggested language.
I like what you said, you're going to.
Okay, or we can defer to Aurora, just understanding.
Uh, I could say something like familiar familiarity with or ability to be trained within. Sixty days of hire on B S N A. Microsoft Office. And G I S applications.
I would support.
Could we say proficient?
Be okay with that.
Not better from day one.
Not from day one.
No.
That's the distinction. That's the distinction.
What is that?
To become.
Language again.
Become proficient.
Become proficient.
Right. Ryan's language was familiarity with or ability to be trained within sixty days of hire in M S Office, relevant G S, G I S apps and B S N A.
That's fair.
Anything else about this position? Okay, is there um a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the utilities field technician job description with the addition under um K S A of familiarity with. Or ability to be trained within sixty days of hire in M S Office, relevant G I S apps and B S N A.
Is there support?
That's part.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? None, motion passes.
May I ask a general question?
You may.
Uh, do we keep training records in general?
Um, if uh. A sign up sheet is given to me or something that has a certificate or something like that, yes. I do keep that in their personnel file, at least I've been keeping it since I've been here.
And prior to Aurora, um it was minimal or haphazard, the first time I handed out a sign in sheet. Um, I was told it was the first time we'd done that.
Mayor Spars.
Okay. And to the utilities field supervisor?
I would say we need to add the same knowledge skilled ability that we just did. For the technician.
That's a part.
That's not in there.
Yeah.
Or where where are we keeping all the job descriptions? You know, when they're all finished, is there a?
When they're all finished, um I'm I have a folder right now, um. Uh, in the shared, well, it's my drive, but it's under the shared, the. I don't know what the correct.
Yeah.
Yes, um, it's in there. And then they will also be provided to Ronberg so that they'll have our our final information. And then um I'm keeping a copy with, I'm collecting signed copies from the employees. Putting in their individual files.
Is there, will it be online on the website, so? You know, like committee members that want to see what the project manager does or, you know, anything like that, so it's available to. The public?
Think we could, but then it would be a matter of every time we updated it, then. That would need to be updated, so I think it would become labor intensive, it would probably be easier to. Contact e- either me or or whomever the appropriate person is to to receive a current copy of it.
But but job descriptions are public records and, you know, could be shared, published, whatever.
Okay, um. Wait, sure, oh, sure. Christie.
What do you mean? You go first, you had your hand up.
Oh. Okay, thank you. Um. Aurora, under the utilities field supervisor, one area that seems a little odd is sixteen, it says adjust. Managers and assist subordinates performing duties, that part makes sense, adjusts errors and complaints.
Um. I think, yeah, that's missing, that's more like the customer service like for um. Yeah, that's some type of adjustments, um.
Like billing adjustments?
Thing, yes, so, yeah, something.
Yeah, we can probably leave the first part and remove the adjust errors or complaints, because that's generally handled by. Other jobs.
Yeah, support, yeah, I. And a question about the supervision structure, you have the grounds and facility custodian also reporting to the field soup, what is your thoughts?
Um, yes, uh, when the utilities director is not in, so. And like P T O or he just had, he's not in the office, et cetera, yes.
So you anticipate that the field supervisor might be in a higher class than the grounds? Maintenance person?
Yes, absolutely.
The question I had about. Some of the preparation of reports and particularly because we, you know, had some late submission of reports, I just authorized the fine. For that late submission last year. I was concerned to see a subordinate position, the field supervisor saying prepares reports and assists. In the I P P cross connection program. I I appreciate that they might be preparing the reports, but final responsibility. For those reports needs to be the person who has the license. And I believe our operator, I believe that's the director.
I believe we address that in the director's job functions. So. I I think we've addressed that regarding reporting and et cetera. So I believe we've addressed that.
Okay, so it says utility field supervisor prepares, and then number four in utilities director, it says ensure submission.
Client's report.
Does ensure submission mean confirm? It's correct and sign their name to it?
That it's, that it's actually was submitted and then that um eagle is uh, they they give a um a final. I'm not sure what their word is, but that, yes, we've received this report.
I just want to avoid any situation where we would have a. You know, senior person in any part of the organization pointing fingers at a subordinate. I mean, if it's really something tied to the operator's license, we just need some clear language that. The operator is responsible for accuracy and timeliness.
And um the utilities director and I did try to address that.
Okay.
And that is how that came to be, this ensuring submission of. Um, because that was not in the previous.
Okay, as long as we all have a shared understanding of what that means.
Real quick, the um. The knowledge and skills abilities here, it says C D L or ability to obtain one preferred. Can we, and that language was also in the previous, I guess that would the technician, can we also do that for the? I guess that was for the sup- supervisor, can we also use that for the technician rather than making it a requirement? Making up. Skills, abilities and minimum qualifications.
Ability to obtain and uh see. C D L or ability to obtain one preferred, so it does say that in the technician, C D L or ability to.
I thought it was required, okay.
No, it's preferred.
All right, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
What was I thinking?
You think you can direct, there's a lot of.
Oh.
Is there? For the supervisor? Field supervisor, anything else?
I was thinking of the um building maintenance person, it's required.
Okay, sir. Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion. To adopt the utilities field supervisor job description. With the addition under K S A of adding familiarity with or ability to be trained within sixty days in M S Office, relevant G I S apps and B S N A.
Is there support?
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? None, motion passes seven zero. Now we are to the utilities director.
I have something.
Trustee, um, Brandon.
So. At a. Supervisory level, um. The director of operations director, utilities. Parks director. I don't see anything in here that talks about reporting to the board of trustees that they're required to pro- to provide reports.
Number twelve.
Number twelve.
Might need to be expanded, but does speak to that.
Oh, I see that.
And speaking of number twelve, attends management and board meetings. So they they attend every board meeting or as needed?
As directed.
Yes.
As.
As needed.
As requested, okay, whatever, but we need to put that in there at least.
I, yeah, no, it's not, it's not required, everyone.
Does anyone besides me think that monthly reports should be prepared for utilities? And presented to the board could be just in the package, but.
Well, he does quarterly now.
That's all at Christie's discretion, and so if that's your suggestion, she could just implement it without any board action.
So Christie, what does he report, is it quarterly for him now?
I would have to check the schedule, but everyone is supposed to report quarterly, some report a little more than others if they're bigger departments like utilities, fire. Uh, code enforcement. When we brought code a code enforcement officer in as, you know, an employee, that person reported more frequently. For that purpose to keep the board up to date on what was going on, but certainly if monthly reports.
So when I say monthly reports, I'm I'm talking about. Data driven reports, not a report that says.
I see.
I did these activities.
Okay.
It could be number of meters installed, um. Feet of tele- televised. I I think that we have a lot of contractors here doing a lot of work, and I don't know what the progress is on on those things.
Thank you.
I would suggest a change to number eight, keeps records of hydrant meter rentals, I mean, certainly. But the calculation of bills based off of usage and days rented, I would suggest um keeps records of hydrant meter rentals. And coordinates with finance assistant to calculate. Shares information with finance. To calculate the bills.
I'd agree with that.
And coordinates information with finance.
There's information with finance to calculate these and any other bills, I mean, that's a. There's close coordination all the time where we need information from ops in order to calculate a proper bill.
What is the language that you're su- suggesting again, keeps records of hydrant meter rentals and? One more time.
Keeps records of hydrant meter rentals and shares. Information with finance team. For the proper calculation. And issuance of bills, period. I would also suggest an addition under K S A about the same computer. Which is one add familiarity with or ability to be trained within sixty days in M S Office, relevant G I S apps and B S N A.
Support.
Under number, number seventeen.
Uh huh.
Assistant preparation of yearly C I P plan for building improvements and contacts contractors to request quotes for any necessary work. However, there's nothing, there should be something about the budget in here as well, because if you go to.
I think it is in there, um.
Uh, number two prepares and provides budget information for operations director and board of trustees to review.
Right, but that's for this water sewer, but this is number seventeen is for the um building improvements.
Could we add building improvements to number two?
Sure.
Sure.
And could we say buildings and grounds, since that is the other department? He's responsible for?
I think it does have building and grounds in here.
I'm just thinking of funds and departments, it's water fund, sewer fund and one oh one two six five is what Brandon's responsible for. Is there a proposed change to that?
That's. It's fine for me. Yeah.
Can I make a suggestion for seventeen?
Sure.
To request quotes for any related building improvement related necessary. Because isn't his job to get quotes for any person, but this is specifically talking about building.
Yeah, and then it's.
Right, seventeen is saying for building improvements and contact contractors to request quote quotes for any necessary work. That would be building of improvements.
That could be any necessary.
Yeah, I would propose we strike seventeen and just add some language to two.
Okay, that's.
Oh, and else? But in seventeen and contacts contractors to request quotes for any necessary work. But when the, like, I was thinking of the H V A system that fell under the project manager, so. The. The building. We're back to the who, what would the building maintenance person and the utility director do when it comes to a big? Project like that, do they do that or do they?
I would suggest that they prepare and plan the capital improvement and related budget for those functions.
Okay, and then just. Not contact contractors?
I think that's too granular, and and I would just say, and this isn't a criticism, because Aurora, you're doing a great job, but I would just reflect. That when you compare this job description to the park's job description, the park's job description is. Um, so much more, um, a little well developed, if I could say, and I know that it's hard to capture the right balance of things. But um, and I appreciate this and want to support this tonight, but would just note that for the future, we need to beef this up a little bit, you know? Um, I think it covers all of the basic functions, just not with as much detail and clarity as the park's director job description does.
Let me, let me just tap the clarification here. This is the utilities director.
Right.
Um, but we're talking about C I P plan for any building. But we're talking about CIP plan for any building improvements. So if we wanted to replace the, the windows in the building, would that be the utilities director that would, that would coordinate the getting the contract, getting the bids for the new windows? I'm, I'm asking, and, and I don't, maybe that's not your, maybe that's not actually for you, that's a question for them.
So share an example, the utilities director brought to the board, the contracts for upgrading all of the restrooms in township hall late last year. So he coordinated, I believe, the tile vendor, the, Christie, you probably remember a little bit better.
With respect to the windows question, anything related to the buildings and grounds would come from the utility director because the building, example, when Scott Martin was here, we re-ashballed it, started the parking lot, he took care of that.
Oh, he's really the building, the building director, the building manager.
Well, and, and we made that clear, I remember when we hired Steve Bogowski, we made that clear, that it was utilities and ground, so I, I trust Aurora with her recommendation of it being utilities, but we just need to understand it encompasses both.
Okay.
And number one says that manages and supervises grounds and facilities.
Grounds and facilities.
But then there, there's a modifier there that says staff.
Mm-hmm, right.
I would make a motion to adopt the utilities director job description with the amendments noted in number two, number eight, number twelve, number seventeen, and the addition under KSA.
Support.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose? None, motion passes seven zero. And I think, oh, no, wait. We finished with oh eight, we're on to oh nine, possible action update, the IT director job title to system administrator and request an increase to the budgeted salary.
Is this, is this the time for increasing but salaries?
Sure, we can do whatever we want to. What you're requesting, because we haven't, we.
The background?
Yeah.
Yes, so the background on, on this is as Ron Burgstover has been doing their wage comparison, and I also reached out to CTC based on their knowledge base of IT jobs and looked at the labor statistics for a system administrator. I did find out that our current authorized position rate of that seventy-eight thousand eight hundred and twenty-five is a bit low for this job. This job is very technical. And that's why I've requested the higher amount because if this is approved, I'm going to go ahead and recruit, start recruiting for this job, so I needed to have a salary set.
And the actual salary that we would set for this person would come back to the board, David, upon any offer of employment that the board makes.
And I would hope that by the time the job's posted, we have it posted for a period of time, we're able to interview candidates, that we would also have been able to at that point, review the salary compensation issues that we discussed earlier this evening, so while it does seem, I don't know, odd's the right word, but it, it seems like a timing issue or a parity issue, I believe that in the end, all the timing will work out very similarly. If not, before, we actually had a candidate for this position.
Okay, cool, are there any questions, comments?
I, I would just make a comment that for these reasons, I, I would support this, I just want to note that we're going to be setting other salaries soon.
Yes.
But this would be for the purpose of recruiting a good candidate, this is an excellent job description.
Yes, thank you Aurora for your work, and thank you, CTC and Trent for putting a lot of time into this as well.
Sir, is there a motion?
Move.
Support.
Is your motion dated?
I'll move the bottom motion. To approve the update about IT manager, director of system administrator, imposed a position to set between eighty thousand and ninety thousand dollars a year. Well, I, to replace, now update, yes, exactly what he said.
It's all support.
Okay, motion by Reed, read by Riser, support by Ryan, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Oppose? None, motion passes seven zero.
All right.
Wow, that was fast.
Yeah, where are we?
Oh, ten.
Oh, ten. Okay, so this is possible action, consideration of remaining candidate for operations director role. What was that?
Aurora was asking if she needed to stay here.
In case she had any questions. Oh, yes, sure, yes. Okay, well.
I recommend we go around the room, we could start wherever anyone would like.
Well, this, trustee Noel, you may quieten.
So you just want our opinions on the path forward?
Yeah, absolutely.
I was very impressed with the candidate. I, I do agree, I wish we had other candidates for comparison's sake. I do agree with that. I, and I'm also concerned that he can't start until, I don't know, Sept-, was it September, October? It's concerning. I still think he was an outstanding candidate, I was impressed with his verbal skills, he responded to my questions at least appropriately. I liked his answers, I met with him a second time. He was straightforward, honest. So, I am torn, I can, I want to hear where others are on this issue. I'm inclined to support him, but I am concerned that we haven't interviewed anyone else, so that's an overview of where I am.
Sure, I want to thank Aurora for her great work, I want to remind the board, we have total consensus on this job description of operations director, that's the first time since twenty twenty-one when we had total consensus on the job description resulting in an offer to David Rowley where we had a seven zero vote, and that's what I'd like to see on this. I agree, we should have, and it was all good work, good process, I would like to have more than one candidate. I, I don't want to speak too much about the one remaining candidate, and I will just say I'm uncomfortable with the, the resolution in the packet, just because it does reflect that one meeting where we had one candidate, and, and for me, this isn't really about the candidate, I will say regarding the candidate, I, a lot of fantastic credentials, his education, his ability to research and write, there are, there's another job here at the township, you know, some positions, some functions, I imagine he could fill for us, but that's not the job that's open, and that's not the job that we're hiring for, the job we're hiring for is operations director, so my concern about the one candidate is not just that we had only one candidate, but in the areas of management and in the areas of operations with little to no substantive experience in either of those. Again, fantastic person, I would be open to it another date, you know, if there were another opportunity we could create here at the township that they might be interested in, but to the question at hand, I think what we need to do is some more recruiting or other steps that our HR manager would recommend, would also flag that to date, we have four applications for finance director. The finance director is going to be harder to fill than the operations director, it will make command as much or more pay, but it is so hard to find public finance people, so my recommendation tonight is going to be to ask our HR manager to look at some recommending, recommended recruiting resources or other next steps, whatever you recommend, do we need to revise the job description? Do we need to hire a recruiter? And to come back to us in two weeks with recommendations for some support for recruiting for both the operations director and the finance director, and I completely support a nationwide search so that we can get some real talent because it is, it is hard to hire for these positions because there are so few candidates, and again, I want to thank the, the candidate and but I just think that at this point, we really need somebody who knows operations and management, thank you.
For sure, Yefel.
Sure. Thank you to Aurora, and thank you to all of the applicants that did apply, we had a very strong applicant pool with over thirty applicants. Certainly not all of them moved forward to interviews, and it was unfortunate, we only had the opportunity to interview one candidate. I did really enjoy speaking with the applicant that we did have and we interviewed. I think we need someone, having now been here, as someone mentioned, over seven months. We need someone with more experience in day-to-day operations and management, and unfortunately, I, I think we need to go out and look for that. Who we had was a very strong candidate, but not someone that had that skill set that we desperately need here in the township, so I, I would support either both, going out looking either for just operations director or a finance director using the same search firm or different search firms if, or, or resources if necessary, certainly there might be some of it's more adept at doing the finance side of it versus this position, so I'd look forward to seeing, hopefully in a couple of weeks where we could be and what options we would have, thank you.
I came away from our meeting with him, with the, with the candidate, with a real positive feeling about him personally. But more I thought about it, tomorrow I thought, there's, there's certain lack of experience there. And I would love if we could find a position for him somewhere here in the township, but I, I think, I think the ops director is maybe a, a stretch for him at this point in time, so, but I mean, I really like the guy, I wish we could find a place for him here.
I was impressed with him as well, I'd be comfortable extending an offer to him, but I appreciate that he lacks some of the leadership experience, supervisory experience, that, that we'd like to have hands-on municipal supervision that we would like. I know there is a municipality south of here by maybe ten miles that just hired someone, and I know that there are candidates who didn't get that position, who are close runners-up, and maybe one of the those two people would be someone we could reach out to. So, I'm comfortable with him because I also know that with any contract, we're going to have, I think it's, I don't know if it's a ninety day or whatever day it is, a term during which if things don't work out, then, then, then he's not retained, so I'm comfortable with that clause to protect us, but you know, we tried so hard to get, we had so many, when then we had three, and at the end of the day, we only had one person. Like, these are tough, I, I mean, we're, we're, we might be looking for something that doesn't exist, and I was sufficiently impressed with his background, with his presentation, that I'm willing to, to extend an offer to him, but I appreciate that others on this board might have.
I'm going to echo some things that other people have said. We just went through job descriptions where we detailed minimum requirements for people, and I think the supervisor experience is a minimum requirement, I would want someone who could hit the ground running on day one, that we're not in a training mode. I really like this gentleman. I, he probably could grow in the role, but I don't think that we want or we can afford to have that learning curve at this point. And I did probe quite a bit on experience, so I think we have a good handle on the actual supervisory experience. And as a wise person recently said to me, don't settle. So, I think we should go out again, use some recruit, recruiting firms, I do have my objections to Amy Sell, which I've stated, but if we could broaden the net for both positions, I, I would be very supportive with that.
Well, I had another interview with Esma, and I found that he would, he has a lot of experience, and he is chief of staff with his councilperson overseas, so he does have staffing experience. Yeah, and I think that, I mean, it's, to me, it's concerning that we had thirty-two applicants and many of them were excellent to great, I think, I can't remember your words, Aurora, something like that, and it, it, there was thirteen, and then we whittled it down to one, and two of them didn't show up, and that's very concerning to me, so that means.
Yes.
No, there was thirteen, and then it went to four.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then one found a job, I, I, I'm assuming, they didn't, and then we had the three, and then two didn't even show up on the day, so I'm concerned that I think, I think that Esma has a, has a lot of experience, and he's smart, he has a PhD, he has all these other things that he has done, and, and he comes from Detroit, he's worked with that team to turn Detroit around, and if he can be part of that team, and I think he would do a wonderful job here, and I also agree that, yeah, we had one to choose from. Well, after, you know, we whittled it down because we, we read their resumes. So I, I would be, I would vote for him, and I, I'm also concerned, as Kat, trustee Noel said, he doesn't start till October, and I understand his situation, but we need hopefully somebody quicker. I don't know.
I'd like to make a motion to direct the HR manager to return to the board of trustees with recommended recruiting resources or any other necessary steps you think the board should take to extend the searches for operations director and finance director and bring such recommendations to the board on July eighth.
I would support that.
Sir, roll call, ball please.
Yefel?
Yes.
Flintoft? Yes. Brand?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Unanimous, seven zero. I just want to say, I know the entire board appreciated meeting the candidate, I had a fantastic one-on-one conversation, and I meant what I said before about, you know, wishing we had a, a different opportunity to offer, so thank you, Aurora, for all your work on this.
Thank you.
We haven't said no to this guy, we're just casting our net, is that correct? We didn't.
We just, we just said what we said about the search.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
Casting a net.
Yep.
So you're saying that he could apply again?
He has applied.
He has applied.
But then he would be part of.
His application is pending.
His application is still pending?
And he's not available to
Aurora, I, and correct me if I'm wrong, his his application is pending. We are not moving forward at this point, is what we've just indicated.
Correct. If you, if you were, the motion was to go to other necessary steps, so I will seek out a search firm, a recruiter.
Yeah.
Widen the net through Michigan, throughout Michigan, and if need be, you know, more regionally
Yeah.
for and recruit for this role. But yes, you did not vote that you did not wish to pursue this particular employment, but you do not want to make a decision based on one applicant.
And John, we and all other public bodies typically never say no to someone, and I would never want to do that.
My point is, his application that
Thank you.
Thank you, Aurora.
Thank you, Aurora.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Oh, three.
Oh, three.
Got it.
Do you like me to introduce this?
No, I will. Well,
I prepared it.
Oh, yeah, but oh, three, discussion only, consideration of offer of agreement to downtown development authority to share captured assessed value of millages for parks by your public transit and open space.
I prepared it.
Go ahead.
Thank you. And if we need to amend our rules to make that practice clear, I will propose that at the next meeting. Discussion only, I want to thank township attorney Mariah Think for her good work on this. We've had discussions about this for months, first starting with the fire finance team and into our attorneys' meetings. I have two handouts and I know Ryan and others will have more to add on this. Would you be so kind as to take one and pass each of these down for reference, Jillian? This is for discussion only. My hope for tonight's conversation is to gain understanding and identify what additional information the board needs. So I hope to have kind of a ten minute conversation about this because this is a much longer process. This would be a voluntary agreement as drafted. It would have to be an agreement entered into by both the township board and the DDA board. The agreement as drafted would have the DDA return to the township the captured assessed value of taxes for the four special millages, which are of course parks, fire, transportation, and open space. As you'll see in the handout, we have a summary, cash summary of each of those funds as of today and a summary revenue and expenditure report of each of those to get a sense of the magnitude. Under this proposal, the township would dedicate these returned funds. So right now, they can be used for any DDA purpose. They would come back to the township and be dedicated to the purpose of each special revenue source. So for fire, open space, parks, bus, respectively. This act would allow our township to invest more into parks initiatives. We keep adding more parks initiatives. It would allow us to invest more into the second fire station, which is essential. Because as this board will remember, we were successful at the ballot box, but we based all of our projections with plant on an SAD, which is not captured by the DDA. After the ballot proposal was adopted, we got a legal opinion from Miller Canfield, our bond counsel and kind of specialist on this, stating that it is in fact written as a millage, which allows for the DDA capture. All of our projections were based on that funding not being captured. Ryan, is that around five hundred thousand?
Correct.
Without that five hundred thousand, we will have to go back to the drawing board on our building. We may have to potentially bond more. So the time sensitivity of this, besides this just being a good idea, we've never tried for many reasons, is we need to go bond by about August, Nov- you know, October, somewhere in there. That action will be coming to the board and we need to know how much to bond. We need to know how much we can build. So there'll be some immediate effects to the township if the township does not get that fire portion back. Also, the public transit fund. I don't have to remind you of the deficit projections we have and had presented to us at this board table beginning in twenty twenty eight, which is not far away. This would help reduce that deficit in the public transit fund so that we don't have to cut services or go back out to voters for yet another ask. Further, for the open space fund, it would add funding to help offset some of the devastating federal cuts, the RCPP, all the other funds, and I don't expect we're going to have much more of those funding opportunities during the next four years. So the impact on the DDA, the full financial projection, I will have, Plant Moran is working on it. And that will be available at the July eighth meeting. But tonight, we can talk just briefly in rough numbers of what the financial impacts would be for each of those four funds and the DDA. Ryan, do you want to take it from here?
Yep. So I can share specifically for those four funds that are affected. The fire fund, as Jessica said, is approximately five hundred thousand dollars per year, which would have a massive impact on our ability to construct the station as is and impact our ability to complete the project as originally envisioned. Open space, last year, the DDA captured sixty nine thousand, three hundred and seventy three dollars of open space funds. For bus last year, the bus fund capture was forty eight thousand, one hundred and fourteen dollars. Parks last year was eighty eight thousand, seven hundred and seventy one dollars. When you add up those totals, it's over two hundred and six thousand, two hundred and fifty nine dollars in total capture that the DDA had.
Wait, what's
Plus, plus the five hundred thousand for Friday. Sorry. In addition to that, there's a couple of other things to think about. The DDA currently has approximately three point three million dollars in bonds outstanding. The DDA's cash position, as it was presented to us today, is approximately six million, thirty five thousand dollars. To give people an idea, that means there's two point seven million dollars above the capital need. That does not include the DDA's projected budget for this year, which, as I mentioned earlier, we'll have to present next meeting in July the eighth. We also will have additional capture this year of tax increment revenue of approximately two point two to two point three million dollars. That is additional funds that'll come in through the end of the DDA's life, and that about generally increases over time.
I was gonna say, is that about every year they give them two? Every year goes up a little bit, starting
Gen- generally, it goes up by the rate of inflation, plus construction activity within the DDA district, which this year specifically, Woodview Commons is going to be nearly, I would say it's seventy, eighty percent complete. So the value will go up a fair amount from that. Suburban Lithia will be in the next assessing year. So that and the final key chunk of value from Woodview Commons, so to say, will be realized in the DDA's tax capture in the in the tax season that starts of December twenty twenty six. Sorry, I don't want to confuse people or go too far afraid.
Two point two, two point three.
Yep.
It's seven hundred thousand.
Correct. Go ahead.
Has the DDA, the DDA aware of this? Are they already at the table and they're already discussing? Like, is this up to us or is it up to them?
It's, it's, it's up to, it's up to both parties. And that's why I brought it here first, to see if it's even something this board wants to offer the DDA. So my, my sense, I mean, the DDA could offer it to us. And I'll leave it to Ryan and Jillian to brief you on what kind of informal discussions they've had. But there's no proposal. I can't make a proposal to the DDA, John, right? But but certainly this board can make a proposal. And so this is the opportunity to start that discussion. I think it's all around a good idea. And I would also say the DDA would still be fully financially supported to meet all of its budgeted plans for the coming year, I think, including the budget amendment that is coming to us next meeting, as well as more than meet their debt obligation. For too, too, too many years, the DDA has had frankly, too much in its fund balance. And when voters vote on these special millages, they expect them to go to that purpose and we have the chance to make that happen.
Okay, that, I was just, my question was, what would they say? Would they say we would need this money to do sidewalks or park on improvements or sewer improvements? Or I'm just wondering what the DDA would have to say about where that revenue would be going in the district? That's all.
Yes, we'd have to ask if if we're interested in this.
You mean, if we're interested in taking their money or money that they would otherwise get?
Right, and and I would, and I would remind you, John, I, John, I would also remind you that we provide all of the financial accounting for the DDA. So their financial projections are our financial projections. I just printed up. It's just a fund in our general ledger, John. It's not like a separate, totally separate entity.
I believe, and we could also ask our township attorney that the DDA's bonds are also guaranteed by Sciop Township, I believe. If you go back and look at the bonding documents.
I think that's probably true. I haven't looked at it though.
I I have looked at it and they are in our name.
Yeah, so that, that's another thing. I guess I can quickly touch on the informal conversations I've had is I think the DDA certainly understands the importance of the fire department. I think the DDA may, some members may not find it favorable for the other millages and they may not even find it favorable for the fire assessment. But I think that some members feel one way, some members feel differently. I think it's best to have the DDA discuss as a whole to determine what the DDA does or doesn't want to do. But I do see the value, especially for the fire. The DDA, I will say, one of the things we've done over the last several years is committed back, sometimes in falls, sometimes in parks, sometimes in surplus of what our capture is, of the DDA's capture to different activities of these specific appointed villages. For example, one of the upcoming things in the bus millage, or sorry, in the DDA's budget proposal or budget amendment is a forty thousand dollar contribution transfer out to the bus fund, which would be ninety something percent of what our capture was to fund the, help fund the the hole or the deficit there. Certainly, it's, the DDA can do that discretionaryally year to year. So it doesn't give you the same guarantee that dedicating or recommitting the funds directly in the township does. But it is one way to do it. I'm not saying it's right or wrong.
This is just like any other contract. This is subject to negotiation.
Of course.
Right. They could come back with something, this isn't all they're nothing, they could come back with some other offer, right? If anyone
And and I would propose this for discussion tonight and and bring the financial projection. Everybody can identify their questions. And then I would propose that on July eighth, this body decide whether or not we want to offer this to the DDA and appoint a negotiating team.
Sure.
When do we meet again for the DDA?
Oh, it's the fourteenth or the twelfth, something like that. The DDA's next meeting is July fourteenth at noon.
So that's perfect because then by that time, the board will have decided whether or not we're serious about this and we could appoint somebody to introduce the idea to the DDA.
Sure.
Yes, it's poorly formatted. What else? Yeah, it was the default out of BSNA and I didn't have time to make it pretty.
Okay.
I got one. Ryan, Daniel, if that figured you need.
Okay.
At least I need.
So the the full financial projection, you know, by Plant Moran, it will be very close to what Ryan said. But I've asked them to provide an impact over all of the future years for the DDA and for the four impacted special millages. Are there any, is there any other information board members would like besides that financial projection in preparation for our potential action on July eighth?
Anyone?
That financial projection would include projects that Ryan mentioned, the new developments, things like that?
Yeah.
Okay.
It'll be a full projection for each of the five funds that we're talking about. One of the funds is the DDA fund, how it, if they can meet their projected expenditures as well as the impact on fund balance.
On all five?
On all five, so we can see the full picture.
Let's see, Riser, you were
No, I, 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 how many people are on the DDA?
Seven.
And so when, when, yeah, Bert Flintoff, when you say when we're serious about this, I mean, does that mean when we're serious about asking the DDA to offer to give us money to which we're not statutorily entitled to, but they're going to do it out of civic duty or the the greater good of the township operations because their financial position is such that they can afford to do it? Is that essentially correct?
Because their financial position is such that they can do it. Because it is in the public good in about fourteen different ways. Because it is administratively more efficient. Instead of having, it kills me when our staff people have to take time out of their day to go to a DDA meeting to ask for money each time for these piddly little things and then we transfer it back. It's it's inefficient and four, I think it's in line with what voters expect. The DDA's work is very important. I am so glad that we have members who are invigorated, that Jillian and Ryan are putting the time into it. And I expect the DDA to do more and more. They have more than enough money and I know they're all focused on these same goals. They also don't want us to have to go back out again for fire, go back out for bus. They also care about open space. And I think a majority of the DDA members understand we're probably not going to get any more federal funding for parks and open space for the foreseeable future.
And one last thing I would just say is, all the members on the DDA are either residents, employees, business owners, people that have a vested interest in the community, so ultimately
They have to.
Yeah, they they have to by statute.
Thank you. Rusty, Brad?
Just briefly, when the DDA was formed in, I believe, this nineteen eighty eight, the mission and the capture rate were to, for very substantial projects, Jackson Road and Water and Sewer. That mission has been fulfilled, but the capture rate is still where it is. So I think the capture rate is too high. Well, this is, this doesn't address that. This is
I I agree with you. I think that's probably part of why their fund balance is lower where it should be.
Well, the DDA attorney was kind of shocked that it was only fifty percent and not a hundred.
Is there another jurisdiction who has a hundred?
Yeah, there are others, but but Ann Arbor has one percent, but then they collect a ton of money within their one percent.
I'll put a final comment on the record, when searching for the original DDA tax rule in the basement, which we did find. There was a letter back from the eighties where the DDA had requested WISD to give a hundred percent capture and the county board of commissioners had denied their request. But time, time to move on. We can go down rabbit holes for a while.
Okay, are we finished with this discussion? Okay, moving on to oh, four, possible action restated and amended Articles of Incorporation of the Lockalpines Sanitary Authority of Webster and Sciop Townships.
Great, thank you. I assume everybody's read the background, received the note from our township attorney today as a refresher. LASSA is a public entity, the responsibility jointly of Sciop and Towns- Sciop and Webster Townships. It was originally incorporated in nineteen fifty seven with amendments in seventy one, seventy five, and ninety eight. That is included as document current LASSA Articles of Incorporation. It is that document and those three amendments altogether, which is why it's kind of a big It is that document and those three amendments altogether, which is why it's kind of a big hairy confusing mess to read. Didn't have the opportunity to turn our attention to it, because it was working fine, until we had that opportunity in September of twenty twenty-three, when Sciop Township Supervisor Hathaway resigned from the LASSA Board, citing certain provisions of the LASSA Articles. Supervisor Kingsley and I both said, oh, we thought, you know, that couldn't happen. So it gave us a chance to have our township attorney and the LASSA attorney, Jim Fink, to review it, and he identified, whoa, these are hard to read, need to be modernized, but more urgently, they're not in compliance with the law. The Articles of Incorporation, it's probably a relic of this shift from going from a private system to a public system in the fifties, where the articles have, you know, seven members, and it still says that the Lockalpine Improvement Association, a private HOA, shall appoint directly to this public body. That's not kosher, that's not something you see in any other body. Since Jim Fink resigned as LASSA attorney, and the LASSA Board appointed Matt Jane, Matt Jane has concurred with that opinion. So, over the last year and a half, the LASSA Board has had a working group of the supervisor of Webster, first Kingsley, and now D'Angelo. The Lockalpine Improvement Association rep, first Dave Navarre, and now Andrea Dorni, and the Sciop Township clerk, still me. We've met four times, and I want to thank Jim Fink and Matt Jane for their work. They, Matt Jane finished this and presented it, finished this final draft, which is called the Restated and Amended LASSA Articles of Incorporation Final Draft, oh five twenty-one, twenty twenty-five. So, this is the beginning of a process between three bodies. The LASSA Board, the Sciop Board, and the Webster Board. All three entities must approve this document. So this will probably take two to three to four months to get approved. We had expected to have a LASSA Board meeting last night to first talk about it. That was canceled and will be rescheduled at some point. The Webster Township Board will be looking at the Sciop Township, so what I want to make clear is, and I confirmed this with Mariah, is it doesn't really matter where we start the party. We can review it, make sure everybody has an understanding, get Sciop Township Board approval, or we can have more discussion about it. But this will be the first time that we're talking about it in a public body. I'd like to just give a quick overview of the changes, because the, the biggest change is that it's been modernized and simplified, so thank you. But the only substantive changes in here, if we're looking at the restated and amended, going by paragraphs, effectively, the only change between this document substantive change is in Article Five. And Article Five, you can compare it with the current Amendment Three, Article Seven. So if you go to the current one, Amendment Three, Article Seven, that's where it talks about membership. Membership of both the Board and of the Operating Committee. The LASSA Board has always had an operating committee who is empowered to carry out the administrative duties, some of the administrative duties of the LASSA Board. And so the two changes, if you go to the second page of the proposed bylaws, the significant changes are at the top of that second page. At least one of the members appointed by each township shall be a member of the respective township's Board of Trustees. What that does, right now, it says each the Webster Board and each the Sciop Board shall appoint three representatives. The current Articles of Incorporation are the same. It states, it, it basically says it can be any member of the Board or a community member. It took a long time for me to understand that, but Jim Fink, you know, and Matt Jane explained that, it was just so confusing. And you'll remember, the Board has appointed different people at different times. We even had Patrick McLaughlin appointed as a community rep of Sciop. What this proposal would make clear, and our working group talked about it, because I kind of, you know, see the merits of both, having community reps but also officials on it. This would propose that at least one member appointed by each of the township shall be a member of the respective township Board of Trustees. That was particularly important to Webster Township Supervisor, you know, saying, well, hey, what if we open, open things up? Particularly, we don't happen to have anybody who's an elected official who lives in the LASSA district. I also think that that's helpful. So this gives kind of the most flexibility to each the Webster Board and the Sciop Board about who can be appointed. But frankly, it doesn't change the membership requirements from what we have now. We could do that now. The second major point that's changed, it says the Board shall adopt procedures and rules regarding the recruitment and appointment of the seventh member of the Board that is to be a resident of the LASSA service area. That provision replaces what is noted as a currently not lawful provision that we have, where the Lockalpine Improvement Association directly appoints that member. So there's two problems with our current Articles of Incorporation flagged by both attorneys for the last eighteen months. We can't have a private entity directly appointing, though the intention is, of course, to reserve that seventh seat for that person living in that LASSA service area. Instead, the Board, meaning the LASSA Board, would adopt procedures and rules that would probably include nominations, consultations, applications, whatever it is. You know, something democratic and robust within the LASSA service district to recruit and appoint that seventh member of the Board. The other difference is, the Lockalpine Improvement Association is no longer the HOA, the only HOA. And importantly, the LASSA service area has three HOAs. So there's actually LASSA service area residents who cannot be appointed. Now, the Improvement Association is the overwhelming majority, but still, that's an unfairness that needs to be addressed. And so this also resolves that issue, to give the opportunity for anybody in the service area to be appointed instead of a person who happens to just live in the first HOA that existed. This provision in particular, I think, has maybe not been fully understood, or it's been fully understood in a fear that the move here is for the township boards to reduce the resident participation in the LASSA Board, and that is certainly not the intention. I want to be clear about that. Lucy Cohen emailed me today with some good suggestions about maybe coming up with like a draft fact sheet of what these changes would mean, and I'm happy to take that on and draft something up for everybody to review, and if the LASSA Board wants to distribute to everybody, we can. But I just want to be clear about what those changes are. Are there questions about those two changes? Lucy Cohen is a wonderful Sciop resident who is the treasurer of the Improvement Association. Yeah. No, just more developments. New developments. So again, this is a nineteen fifty's system. It used to be private. These are just some, some relics. So the intention of Matt Jane saying, the Board shall adopt procedures and rules regarding recruitment and appointment, the intention of the entire subcommittee was to make clear that the LASSA Board would be doing a democratic process to make sure that every resident and every HOA felt. But these are articles, and so you don't want to go into too much detail. Are there questions?
Yes, one is my favorite. Are these, do these have to be adopted by Sciop and Webster and, and the?
LASSA Board.
LASSA Board, all three boards?
Yeah, that's why this.
And all of them have to say yes, and if, what if it's two out of the three, you're?
Then we keep amending and amending until we get there. So I, I think that, you know, there's no perfect way to get a, you know, multi-month collaboration party started, but I think talking about it in a public meeting and, you know, figuring out if the Sciop Board is supportive, we could discuss, take action at a future date. We can take action. Our township attorney, our LASSA attorney have recommended this. We can approve, but subject to this coming back to the Sciop Board if the LASSA Board or Webster Board have any proposed amendments, which would be my recommendation. I, I also want to just point out the one other change, and it's in the same page. The Board shall also select an operating committee. The operating committee used to just be three people, and it was not necessarily balanced between the two townships. So this change makes it that it could be more than three, which practically, over the years, it has been. So it's more inclusive, it gets more people at the table, but it would require that the operating committee have at least one board member from each township. And the reason why that's important is because we are responsible for LASSA, Webster and Sciop at the end of the day. And so we thought it was important to have that responsibility in there, given that the operating committee, aside from the operator and engineer and accountant, who are all contractors, are kind of the closest to an administrator of the system. Those are the two changes.
So I have a question here. So the authority shall be governed by the Board of Trustees consisting of seven members. Three members shall be appointed by Webster Township Board, three members shall be appointed by the Sciop Township Board, and then the seventh. Okay, so right now, in the, in the Articles, Amendment Three, it states that it's the supervisor and the, and the clerk, and one other trustee.
Not quite.
Yes, but go on.
It does.
Go on, read it a couple of times. And that if one of those, the supervisor clerk or the trustee does not want to do that, then they can resign. And then the one thing that it does say is that the person that resigns can appoint somebody within their township, which I don't agree with that. However, but this narrows it down to one member from each board.
At least.
And I, I'm uncomfortable with that, because the reason why we have LASSA is because it was a court order for the two townships to come together, and the Board of Trustees were elected by, they have an oath, and they're more serious about this type of business. It's not a business, but you know, this type of work, than just randomly, oh, we have one trustee, and then from each, and then we have, we're appointing just people from the public. So, of course, I'm hoping that if they're wanting to be on a board, they're going to be serious about it, but we've also run into, you know, other committee members.
So I, I think you raised two good points to discuss, but they are separate points, so I want to take them one by one. The first is what the current Articles of Incorporation state. This question was looked at, confirmed by Jim Fink, which is why when Will Hathaway submitted his letter to LASSA, much to our surprise, they were able to accept it. The LASSA Board did not know, Supervisor Kingsley, then Chair, did not know if we could legally accept it. We got the legal determination that based on the current articles, no. It doesn't, the supervisor may step down, and in fact, the Board may appoint the replacement, and that is the authority this Board used when I brought the motion to appoint trustee, then trustee Carrie, Jillian, to the LASSA Board. So we demonstrated that that is the law.
So you're saying that a person cannot resign?
The person, of course, a person can resign, but these articles are so confusing, and we thank Jim Fink for his good work in his correct interpretation, that it does not have to be the supervisor or the clerk in particular who a Board appoints, and yes, that people can resign. Mariah, do you have anything additional? Okay, thank you. Second point is, in terms of the at least one of the members, at least one of the members appointed by each township. Certainly, if Webster Township and the LASSA Board wanted to change that, that could come back to the Sciop Board, but I would say with this current proposal, at least one of the members appointed by each township shall be a member of the respective township Board. That's up to our discretion. We could have all three, we could have two, we could have one. But, and I think there's merits to lots of sides, but that's a policy call of each the Sciop and Webster Boards, and this would give each of those Boards the opportunity to do one, two, or three.
Well, so Sciop Township cannot have its own policy for LASSA, it would be in the articles that we would have to, because we're all three of us are, agree, or all three entities are agreeing to the articles, which would state.
The articles are permissive for each of this, for each of the appointing townships. Each appointing township can then have a policy within that permission to say one, two, or three.
We could do a random drawing if we wanted.
So if, if this is adopted.
Yes, and, and currently, today, with our current articles, we can do one, two, or three. Currently, with our current articles, we could have all three members be community members. I'm not proposing that, but I'm just saying, we could. And so that, that's what I want to be clear about, and these are Articles of Incorporation. They've not been amended since nineteen ninety-eight, but we want to keep them lean and simple with as much latitude for all of the unexpected things that will happen in the coming decades.
Well, in the original articles stated ten, ten members.
They were from nineteen fifty-seven, which is why I was bottom lining it for this Board.
So that, that's what, what's confusing here is how can, I mean, apparently, there was a process in the past, and they created these different articles, amendments, right? Amendments?
Yeah, there was one article and three amendments, but I will just note that there have been seven members for many decades.
Well, right, but my point is, is that if these are adopted, the articles are adopted, then LASSA Board has to follow them, and so do the Webster and Sciop Township. They have to honor these articles.
If the articles are adopted by all three boards and properly filed with the county clerk in this state.
So are action steps to wait until LASSA takes this up, or do we say, we like them? Here you are, LASSA, Webster, what do you think? And then is that?
I would recommend the latter, John. Otherwise, this will be another eighteen months before it goes. But, but I would note that, I mean, that any approval, I really think it's important if the LASSA Board expresses anything but complete agreement with this, or if the Webster Board expresses anything but complete agreement, then we reconvene.
The bill comes back for reconciliation?
Yeah.
Okay.
I guess I'd make them up. Is there a motion?
There's not.
Okay, so I guess I'd make a motion then to approve the restated and amended Articles of Incorporation of the Lockalpine Sanitary Authority of Webster and Sciop Townships, subject to any amendments presented by either the Webster Township Board of Trustees or the LASSA Board of Trustees. Uh, you had an amendment?
Well, I'll support that, just to get it on the floor.
That we approve this document for submission to LASSA and?
We, we don't, we don't submit to it. It, it just, we would do our part in approving and state what Ryan was saying.
Do they all have a copy of this right now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, my, my misunderstanding. I'll withdraw that.
And we could amend it later, subject to what LASSA Board does and what the Webster Board does.
And I would wonder, Ryan, I would ask for Mariah's opinion, because I really liked your motion, Ryan, and John, the subject to any amendments presented, I would just say something, I, I want to make sure that it's clear that we would reconvene and consider. How would you say that?
Reconvene and reconsider upon presentation of any amendments?
Yes.
Okay, I can do that.
Nothing happens unless all three of us agree on the same thing.
But, but John, I want to be really clear about process in our motion, because there have been, there's been a lot of misunderstandings and misinformation about this, so I want to be super clear that, you know, any one body's approval is, you know, dependent on the other two bodies.
Right.
Yeah, how about subject to reconsideration?
Yeah, how about subject to reconsideration and revision based on input from the other bodies? Would that work?
Yeah. Based on any input received from?
It's hard to work that out.
I'm, I'm working on it.
Received from? And do we want, want it received from?
I would say any input received from the Lhasa Board, the Webster Board. And, and I would also add if, if the board would approve any of the HOAs in the Lhasa service area.
Other than that, would you agree with proposed modifications?
I like that. How about just a big girl word, proposed amendments? So it's not just general input, proposed amendments?
Now, like big girl word?
Yeah.
What's it, world?
Well, I learned those.
Are people open to taking any proposed amendments from any of the three HOAs in the service area? Or not? And I ask only because it's not that they have a right to propose a formal amendment, but there has been such kind of kerfuffles and consternation and concern. I want to make sure that we're clearly open to, to hearing.
Yes.
They only have one representative. Currently.
At, as it says.
One of the three HOAs has one representative on the board.
Okay. Do we know the population is like eighty, ten and ten percent?
Or less than ten?
Yeah, at least eighty.
They are your constituents though, so they have elected you to represent them on this board.
Right.
Except the Webster.
Mm-hmm. I mean, I would just
Be open to the HOA feedback.
Or proposed amendments from any, how about, we could simplify, proposed amendments from any Lhasa, any residents of the Lhasa service area, any Lhasa customers.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's better.
How are they going to get this document?
Well, let's, let's first get this motion and then we can
Okay, let me, let me try to look at this. So, and move to per the restated amended Articles of Incorporation of the Lockalpines Sanitary Authority of Webster and CIO Townships. What was the word we finally decided on after that?
CIO Townships, Wasna County, Michigan, subject to reconsideration and revision based on any proposed amendments received from the Lhasa Board, the Webster Board or Lhasa customers.
Yep, I agree with that.
Okay.
So you have it written down, but you keep it? Oh, man.
I would also state to your question, David, I would also suggest I'd offer to start drafting a summary document. I think that will be helpful for the Lhasa Board and maybe the Webster Board. And once the Lhasa Board does convene, the Lhasa Board can talk about, you know, process, how we're going to start getting this information out. But certainly the CIO Board, you know, I'd be happy to get it out to CIO people. We can, you know, start posting it on our website and do everything we can. I'm happy to do any of that.
Dave, can you maybe lean in a little closer to your microphone and getting some comments?
I'll, I'll reply.
And, and also of course, after, you know, tomorrow, no matter what action we take, I'll report that to each the Webster and Lhasa Board.
Can we vote?
I'd make a motion to call the question.
Support.
Yes, we do. I will call a vote, please.
Okay. Um, Yable?
Yes.
Flintoff, TS? Grant?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Barry?
I'm voting no at this point because I'm too tired to even think about all this.
Six to one? Okay.
So according to our rules of order, three hours after the start of the meeting, which is three hours and fifteen minutes after the start of the meeting, we have six more, or, sorry, one, two, one, two, four, five.
They're quicker ones, I think. But I'm sorry, what were you saying about our rules of order?
Well, I guess, um.
I'm, I'm going to
Be thinking.
Stay there a little longer.
Okay, well, let's take a vote, a motion to adjourn it, this, or end the meeting.
That's the motion?
You're making a motion?
I am. Yeah, sorry. So we need some
I'm sorry, was there a motion and a second?
There's no second?
No second, or yet?
Okay.
There's an, there's a motion to adjourn with no second? I would ask that we continue unless there's another motion, Jillian?
I guess. Yeah. Let's move along. All right, let's move on to, um, oh, five.
Okay, um, kind of two points to this and, and Ryan, Jillian and I, as you know, have been the Lhasa reps. I've been the CIO Lhasa rep since twenty nineteen. Jillian's been on since twenty twenty-three. Ryan's been on since twenty twenty-four, or beginning of twenty-five?
When he got elected.
Four, yeah.
And so really two points, and this can be, you know, for discussion or action if people want to. I, I want to talk about the CIO members that are appointed to the Lhasa Board and kind of two parts of it. So the first part is more related to the discussion of kind of what the right balance for membership of Lhasa is related to Lhasa service area and, and not. And under our current Articles of Incorporation and the proposed ones, both, the board can have appoint a community member. I would recommend a Lhasa area resident to be one of the members. So what I wanted to share was an idea of, you know, maybe the board launch an application process, do some outreach to CIO residents, because there has been an expressed need, expressed desire from some of the Lhasa residents to have more Lhasa resident representation on Lhasa Board. More than just the one seat. So I wanted to suggest that this board might direct the clerk to launch an application process for CIO residents who live within the Lhasa service area to serve as representative of the CIO Township Board of Trustees to Lhasa and to return any applications to the board by not later than August twenty-sixth.
Can I ask if the, of the three, are all three of the reps still interested in serving on this board? With, are, are all three of you interested?
I am.
I am.
I am.
I, I don't want to dispossess anyone who's on it.
Right. So let me also share the, the, the second item, which is, I, I appreciate, we don't want to dispossess, oh, and, and this idea can percolate until July eighth, if you want to talk about it more than. I would say that there has been, we used to ha- happen to have people who lived in Lhasa who were elected officials. There's one on the Webster Board, there's zero on the CIO Board right now, just by chance.
Who listens?
So
I'm sorry, Webster?
But one of the trustees who's not on their Lhasa Board yet.
So Mike, Mike, one of the ways to do that is to increase the number from seven to nine?
That was the previous item.
Okay. I know, but
But, and we could uh, we, we could, I think nine, personally, I think a governing body of nine is unwieldy. It's not like the Board of Commissioners who's just kind of legislative. It's actually operating a public authority. Um, the, the other thing I wanted to say about the members to Lhasa is that, and I know the board received an email from Matt Jane and things, and, and I don't want to talk about this in pub, public. We've talked about details in private. We've talked about this in attorney-client privileged spaces, but I am really concerned about the CIO Board's appointments to Lhasa in terms of the real financial costs to Lhasa ratepayers over the last few months that are going up and up and potential legal liability based on the CIO Board's reps' participation on the Lhasa Board. And so one idea I had
Well, that's one of the three people on this table, right?
Correct.
Okay.
And one idea I had, since we've had multiple conversations privately, is if we might request, and I don't know the details, but if we could request our township attorney to, you know, draft a memo on some subject of this so that we can talk as a board about some of these issues. They are in my mind very serious, risky, and I'm very concerned about what's happening. And, and at this point, I feel I need the board's help on this. Ryan?
I would agree, we're at a potential six-figure impact.
Six-figure or what?
We have problems and I need the board's help. So I'm trying to talk, so I'm trying to talk about this in a way, not, not in public.
I get where you're going now.
And we've used every private avenue possible, so I wonder, Mariah, is that something you could put some thought to?
Yeah, no.
Okay.
Thank you.
But, but we're, we're only, and I'm just trying to figure how the dynamic of this board versus Webster Township Board versus the Lhasa Board. There, I mean, they're like, are they an autonomous board like the DDA? Lhasa? Even though at the end of the day, we're on the hook?
We decide who we appoint to govern, to sit on each of the sevens, each of those three seats.
Yeah.
It's this board's responsibility.
For our reps.
Correct. And ultimately, you know, something catastrophic happened with Lhasa, which I don't think it will, but that certainly the reason it became a public utility, John, is because it is ultimately our responsibility, when we get the estimates, for example, for the bonding, for the fire station, the debt of the DDA and Lhasa is considered our debt.
No, I, I appreciate that.
Brian, did you want to say anything else on this? Because I know you were going to raise this originally.
Yeah, I, I would look at it from a couple of different standpoints. I'm, I'm looking at it, certainly appreciate everyone's willingness to serve, including my own. And I, I'm also, for the record, willing to step, step back, especially if there is uh, some interest in residents. I would much, I would really love resident participation, I think, when you have a vested interest in, in something that services you, you probably, you know, I certainly have an interest in it, but you have a very vested interest to make sure it works. It works well and it's monetarily efficient. I think the other concern is just that we have tried to work through a lot of issues. But now it's becoming a, it's becoming a concern. I have for ratepayers. And I want to do what's best for, for people that are paying the bills, because ultimately it's the public's money, not our money.
And I totally agree with all of that.
Yep.
And I have been working with the Lhasa Board members that like to work with me, along with F and B and the engineer. And we are scrambling to find policies and procedures that have not been in place, such as, you know, sewer backup policies, water main breaks, that none of that's been implemented or that we can find. And we're doing our best. And you know, there's also things that CIO Township has taken on for Lhasa that has fallen through the cracks.
And Jillian, I know there's a lot of issues that you're upset about, but I want us to focus back on this question.
It's the same thing.
Because it's not the same thing.
It is, because
And I think that what I want to focus on is, I mean this from the bottom of my heart, that I am sincerely concerned about the legal and financial liability
Yes.
that is coming upon ratepayers based on some of the actions of the CIO reps. I am trying, I will ask the, and they are specific, and John?
You said CIO reps, so I'm wondering who the two reps are. You said, you said legal and financial liability based on the actions of the CIO reps.
On advice of counsel, we cannot discuss this in an open session.
Okay.
Yeah, and so, John, I mean, yeah, so we have a, a, a an issue, and so I will ask again, thank you, Mariah, if you could put something together for the CIO Board. And then should the CIO Board decide to consider it in closed session, the CIO Board could do that. I think that's the appropriate forum for this conversation, John.
So we have three reps on this, on, on the board, on, on the Lhasa Boards. And the Lhasa Board is under the old, old bylaws until the new ones are adopted by, by all three party, the tripart. The adoption.
Right, and the Articles have no bearing on this.
So, so until then, we've got three reps unless we move to appoint somebody or to remove some at this meeting today or some future meeting.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay. So this is a discussion item at this juncture.
And what I would suggest as the action is to ask the attorney. I want to know Kathy's been trying to speak.
Okay. Thanks. Apologies.
Okay, so I don't know if you guys recall, but at a recent meeting, I did ask, you know, Julie commented that she's been so busy since the sewer leak issue. And I asked, what have you been doing? I was surprised that she had been so busy. And
Do you think I sit around here doing nothing?
I was surprised because this is, it potentially wasn't an issue that you should have involved yourself in.
No, I'm the chair of the Lhasa Board.
But that doesn't matter.
Yes, it does, Kathy. You don't understand.
Well, let me go on. So, you are interrupting me.
I'm sorry.
And not you.
Well, and you too.
We received this email correspondence from Matt Jane. And in the email correspondence, he said, if anyone has any questions, to feel free to contact him, which I did. We had a very good conversation, brief.
I'm, I'm just compelled to just say one thing.
He said, all of this has been shared publicly.
Okay, thank you. I just want to be very careful because we are very treacherous territory. Thank you.
Everything you said to me has been shared publicly, and I'm not going to go into all, all the detail, but the review is ongoing and they don't have, nobody has all the facts yet. And it's going to be potentially thirty to ninety days before we have a determination from the Tokyo Marine-appointed attorney who is in charge of the investigation. So we have, we have quite a ways to go. He did say to me that he is meeting with F and B in two weeks. He hadn't even, he hasn't even talked to F and B. And yet you said you've
Oh, it's, well, I'm sorry, but
Okay.
Met Jane, F and B and I had a conversation and we went through a list of questions that were given to us by other Lhasa Board members. We are also meeting with Matt Jane and the F and B attorneys on July first.
And that may be the meeting he was referring to.
And it is, I would just again ask that we not talk about these details publicly.
I'll just leave it at that. But based on the conversation, I am concerned. And we can continue this conversation later.
Professor Gable, you, you hit your hand up for a second.
Oh, no, I, I don't have anything for it this time. Thank you.
I would make a motion to table oh five until the July eighth meeting for further conversation.
I was writing some thing notes down here. We got kind of distracted from, from the thing. But are you suggesting, or is it possible that, that we would have to represent? But are you suggesting, or is it possible that our, that we would have two representatives from each township? And then one representative from each HOA?
Everything's possible. Yes, that's a possibility. There's there's lots of possibilities.
But only half of the big HOAs in SIO Township.
Right, I mean, again, if we wanted to appoint, we we could look at that. But yeah, that's all why each board would have its own policy on this or kind of.
I I'd support the motion to table.
Uh it would be a motion to table until July eight.
July eight, sorry.
What if, what if, will will uh Webster and Lassa have voted on it? Because unless and until they voted on it, we might not want to vote on it.
Well, I, there's not no proposed motion on the table. So what what I would suggest, we might continue the conversation about what we might want to do. But I I would also like to um continue in in hopes that our attorney might have a memo on some of the issues, and when she does, the board might choose to go into closed session so that um we can deal with some of the liability issues that Ryan and I have brought to your attention, John.
If I may, there is a motion on the table. That's the table. Yable the item, sorry.
And there was support.
Yeah, there was support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose.
I, did you vote, Jillian? I'd like a roll call.
Well.
No, uh I didn't hear a vote from Jillian. I'd like a roll call.
Okay, I think we've already voted.
Yable?
Uh yes.
Flintoft? Yes. Brandt?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Motion adopted.
I I think she was just calling for opposed in opposition rather than opposing herself. That's how I took it.
Yeah, I wasn't finished saying what I was gonna say, because I'm the moderator and I said, all in favor, say aye. Aye, no, opposed.
I apologize, I didn't hear.
It's okay.
The aye.
Oh six, possible action outside legal review of insurance coverage for legal fees in state versus carry. Treasurer Yable.
Thank you. Um so I did receive uh information from attorney Think and Think about an option for an outside uh insurance counsel to review our insurance policy. Uh the denial letters and other uh pertinent information to see if it is worth uh pursuing additional legal action or uh next steps against our insurance company for the denial of coverage we received May twenty second, twenty twenty four, and July eleventh, twenty twenty four. Uh I did receive a question earlier today, and I spoke with attorney Hamawi. Uh the current proposed item in the packet for six thousand dollars is a verbal opinion. Uh, he would be willing to do a written opinion. Uh the fee for that written opinion option would be ten thousand dollars instead of six thousand dollars. It would still have the same timeline of approximately thirty business days after uh the documentation is provided to him along with the payment. Uh certainly, I'm open to additional questions, uh should anyone have them. Thank you.
I guess this, I can I, Mariah, would a video slash audio recording of a verbal opinion have the same weight as a written opinion?
Uh it depends on what you're going to do with. I I would recommend that at this point you did everything.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's what makes the most sense to me.
Okay.
I want to thank Ryan for pulling this together. We've talked about this for months. Um I think Kathleen and um others have brought this up too. Um to date, we've expended a hundred and eighty one thousand, six hundred and five dollars. Um we're still waiting for one invoice from April, two from May, two from June amounts are yet unknown. Um this firm is recommended by Think and Think, who I trust. Um and then this will give the township an opportunity to see if we might have additional options um to pursue reimbursement from the insurance, or if we likely may not.
Are you looking for comments? Um, I support this effort. I think it's prudent to get a legal opinion. Um, this potentially has big monetary impacts to the township, so I think we should get expertise to to guide us.
Anything else? Anybody else?
Except this isn't engaging them to to fight for us. This is just saying, hey, do we have a a chance? What what kind of fight, kids, we have in a fight?
Correct.
Yeah, and I assume it'll be a confidential memo, um, you know, oh session, you know, attorney client protector, all that kind of stuff.
Correct.
Okay.
And I want to confirm, we're all comfortable. I'm very comfortable and appreciative, but I want to make sure we're all comfortable with Ryan remaining the point person on this. Sure.
And your motion is for ten thousand.
I I'm gonna read out a motion that's a little bit different than the model motion since we had to change. But I was gonna say, uh I would move the motion to approve Treasury Yable to sign the engagement letter, the amount of ten thousand dollars with attorney Hamawi for a written opinion, uh written legal opinion on the case of State v. Carrie.
Friendly amendment?
Sure.
And expend up to ten thousand dollars from funds budgeted in one oh one, two six six, eight two six dash State v. Carrie.
Support that.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose? No, the motion passes.
I just want to know, I I missed the second. Was the second me?
Uh, yes, it was.
Okay, thanks, Ryan.
Moving on to K six.
Mm-hmm.
Authorize the publication of the summer, summer issue of the township township newsletter.
I moved to pull this off consent. It was apparent we needed to um discuss this. I want to thank our newsletter editor, Mary Gillis, for always doing such a good job on our newsletter and for trying to resolve this issue um prior to the board meeting. Um, I want to just say, we're each entitled to our own opinions, but the verifiable facts are verifiable facts. We're public servants and it is just so imperative that we tell the truth, especially in this day and age. And in particular, about the book of records and as documented in MCL forty one point six six. It's so important that we not make misstatements related to the proceedings of a board of trustees meeting. Um, in particular, there is a clause on page two of the newsletter. Um I would say, I believe, is factually incorrect. I believe it's the one that the newsletter editor sent us a proposed revision for, um which I would support or anything similar to that. It is the at the March eleventh, twenty twenty five Board of Trustees meeting, a five-two vote formally designated the supervisor position as part-time. That is untrue. Um, and I do want to share, I have the um resolution here. I have the minutes here. I have reviewed both. Um, and that is not what the five-two vote was. The five-two vote was in support of resolution twenty twenty five twelve, resolution rejecting compensation commission, twenty twenty five salary determination. Nothing in the minutes or the resolution um would suggest that that is not the action. And in fact, I think it's a very different action. Rejecting a determination is very different than restructuring a position. To date, SIO Township has never said if a position formally set, if a position is part-time or full-time, you know, we have seven, or we have four trustees, we have one treasurer, we have one supervisor, we have one clerk. And that's how we've always regarded them. I would just also say, if the board tonight adopted, I would object, but if the board tonight adopted the newsletter as it currently exists, I think it would open up a host of other implications. There are legal cases and other things where our newsletters have been used. What we publish as a publication of the Township Board have been referenced and used. And I will not have a document that, I will not vote for a document that is factually untrue about the records of the township, but importantly, about something that makes a claim about uh employment that could open up a host of other issues for the township. That's all.
Okay, well, I have evidence here from the February nineteenth meeting, the February twenty fifth meeting, and the March eleventh meeting stating the reasons why the salary should be where it is, which is part-time. Kathleen Brand comments plus presentation here. Be using that the data, um and then further, this is a historical, uh prior ser- supervisors and trustees have affirmed the position as part-time. So in twenty twenty one compensation, Jessica Flintoft, you stated that similar. February nineteenth, February twenty fifth, Kathy Noel said supervisor is a part-time position, in my opinion, and just because someone is putting in long hours doesn't mean the supervisor position is a full-time position, on and on. Kathleen Brand, that 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 meeting. Um Rhodes, well, I don't know why you, well anyways, it was fully acknowledged by previous supervisors and trustees that a township intended the supervisor position to be part-time, that prior to a compensation commission acknowledged duties did not change from November nineteenth to November twentieth, no duty change. It is not reasonable, it's not fiscally responsible for me to represent the residents to say that a newly-elected supervisor should get an eighty-six percent increase for a part-time job. Um, the problem it's going to cause with the employees are, even though some of those employees didn't get their raise, March eleventh, Kathy Noel is, SIO is a part-time, or supervisor is a part-time position. This is my opinion and the opinion of many other people, and this opinion is based on my experience being on the SIO board for twelve years and working with several different supervisors. David Reed, supervisor as well, Pathway, was a part-time supervisor, although raised the salary to seventy when he became manager supervisor, took it back down when he got a manager, so um I still believe that the supervisor is a part-time job. Jessica Flintoff has been consistent since twenty twenty, and this is not about personalities. I would be hard-pressed to find anybody um a full-time supervisor in a general law township where there's also a certified assessor, blah, blah, blah. So you based your your votes, and I will give you copies. There's also M Live article that states the same. So this is where you came to your conclusion that a salary of forty-four thousand, which is under the poverty line of Washtenaw County for a part-time position. So, wait, wait, I'm sorry. Oh, you can pass it down.
Would you like?
Copy.
I could, I can sit.
I would, if you don't. Um, from a legal standpoint, the statement that is proposed to be made in the newsletter reads at the March eleventh Board of Trustees meeting, a five-two vote formerly formally designated the supervisor position as part-time. I don't think that that statement is correct.
Okay. Okay.
I I heard all of the statements that you made, that people said that that was their opinion, but there isn't a document that says that the five-two vote created a part-time position.
Right.
So.
Okay.
Implied perhaps, stated this way, that that would not be a correct statement, so.
So then, how can we change that? Because it their their opinions for the forty-four thousand was based on part-time.
That I think the question.
So that is twenty hours.
I think that the question that was that was uh proposed to be answered in that article was when, when are you available in the office? And so that 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 is how I would answer that. I would answer, when are you available at the office? And instead of thi- this other statement, you've made this other statement, I'm reading it again tonight. I don't know that it needs to be.
Well, yeah, it does need to be, because this is the truth. It's part-time, twenty hours, forty-four thousand a year. Okay, so to put in, yeah, because I need to make money so I can, you know, pay my bills. Forty-four thousand, and for a supervisor position, there is no other place, and I'm sorry, but there's not, that has the clerk supervisor and and treasurer. Not all in the the office at the same time. Yeah, I don't know, because if I'm here at seven hours at night on a, for a meeting.
That, you can just say, yeah, the supervisor does not hold regular office hours. You may call the office and schedule an appointment or request an appointment. I mean, that that's.
Oh, and I would love to be here more. I have a lot to do. I have residents that call me, when are you here? Well, I, you know, I have to make money.
Can I raise my shirt comment after Kathy Noel?
Who had their hand up first?
Doesn't matter, I go.
Okay, okay. So first of all, the board as a whole makes policy. And the board as a whole never got my article up here, never stated what you said in the newsletter. The resolution that we passed did not state it. The minutes do not document it. Uh we might have individually expressed opinions, but the board as a whole is the policymaker. And none of us gets to rewrite the public records, Jillian. We need to be factually based.
Well, the public.
Our representations, please let me finish speaking. We, as a board, have a responsibility to make sure the representations contained in the newsletter factually are correct. And that representation is not correct.
Okay, so the board on March eleven.
Jillian, according to our rules of order, you are supposed to let the person speaking finish.
Apologize, finish.
Okay, now you threw me off, and I forgot the next thing I was going to say, but you have gone on about our opinion, uh statements, talking about it being a part-time position whi- which you knew when you ran for the office. Um, is is what our decision was based on. Well, so it is, it's not, Julia, it's, the rationale is not what the decision was. It's, if it was rationale for some of us and not others, I don't know. It was a factor that was mentioned, I agree. And it wa- and you knew it and all of us knew it. But there were many other reasons why we felt that the compensation commission determination should be rejected. And we, I listed off many reasons during our board meeting. And the board provides a check and balance in the process of the compensation commission determination. They do. The other elected officials got a salary increase of four percent, five percent. The compensation commission determination for yours was eighty-six percent. There had been no increased job responsibilities or duties. Since you had taken office, you weren't doing anything expanded beyond what had been done previously. And you knew all of this. I expected you were gonna vote down your recommended salary. Determination. I was surprised that you were so upset about it. Because you knew full well what the salary was before you ran for this office. When you criticized Will for doing the same thing. Arbitrarily raising his salary.
I, are you finished?
I can be done.
Okay, I didn't double my salary. That was the compensation. Will doubled his salary. It's different Kathy. We had a compensation commission and it's, there was a huge increase for both. The clerk and the treasurer the few years before, actually huge raises for a long time. And I'm sorry, but you know, you said that it was part time. You you kept saying, well, you ran for office knowing this was a part time job. There's, you know, you can assume all you want. You get in here and priority waste. I should be paid for that alone. I thank goodness for Chrissy helping out with that, but you know, you 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 say it's part time and it's not. It, this is ridiculous, so everybody gets raises.
I I would just like to ask that we get back to the topic.
Trustee Riser.
Right, thank you, right. So. It's so, this is the township supervisor's message. So I think at the outset, we should be guarded that we don't edit her message. But I also appreciate that the first sentence that is please note. Uh it it's kind of surplusage or dicta with respect to the minutes. But I I I think she's not as available as she would otherwise be because she's not here much. Because it's, we did deem it to be a a part time. So would something like this work, Jillian? At the March eleventh, two thousand and twenty five Board of Trustees meeting comma. The board rejected the compensation commission's supervisor salary determination. On the basis that the position is part time, period. Nonetheless, I remain committed to being accessible and responsive to both public and staff. It it reflects that the 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 vote was that they rejected the the salary determination. And it also says is the basis that it's part time. Be but it's only part time, but I'll still be here to take care. Is that something that might work as a compromise?
Sure, because I, residents expect the supervisor to be here full time, just like in other townships.
I, John, your comment wasn't.
I think you're close.
Here's what I said.
But I I I heard what you said.
At the March, okay.
The part that's not accurate is on the basis that it was part time.
Yeah.
But that did come up predominantly.
Yes, predominantly over and over again.
Let me just say partially.
In in part, in part, in part based, it's large part, by the way.
Well, I, what what I have a, what I have a problem with because truly like how how wildly not true this statement is.
I'm trying to get rid of that.
Yeah, no, but no, John, I need to say, so you understand, Jillian, I don't know if if you understand this perspective. If there were a vote to formally designate the supervisor position as part time, I would have voted no. If there were a vote to formally designate anybody, both any elected official, full time or part time, I would have voted no. Because that is a totally different question than a determination rejecting a determination of a compensation commission. That opens up all sorts of employment implications. Now, Will um brought this up too. Believing that if something is determined part time, that there's some other employment thing. We are elected officials. We don't say if a trustee or clerk or treasurer is part time, that's a employment designation. And I would object to that. I like that you're working on compromise. I will say Mary has a compromise.
That's what I was gonna.
I would trust Jillian and Mary to work together, but I do know Mary has tried multiple times, so. She, you know, we we have to resolve this as a board.
I, yeah, I don't do it here, I.
You know, it's it's hard. I think you're close, though. Like, it's just that on the basis if we struck that. But it's gotta feel authentic for Jillian while still being truthful.
Okay, so you're saying, no, not yet. So Jessica, you said that this is not a part time and none of these positions are part time, but then. Chrissy Knoll just said you knew it was a part time position when you were ready.
Jillian, Jillian, that's not what I said. I said, had the question come before this board. To formally designate the supervisor position as part time, I would have voted no. That's how different your statement is from what actually.
Okay, so the determination to keep the salary for the supervisor at forty four thousand was. Mostly based on pa- part time, excuse me, part time.
Perception.
No, it's not Kathy. It's in the minutes or not the minutes.
On that, there were multiple factors that each of us had. Okay, so what about Mary's suggested revision language? That she sent to the entire board. See, when did it come? So. Here's what she would suggest. The salary determination proposed for the position of supervisor. By the compensation commission was rejected by a five to two vote of the board. The resulting salary is one that I feel more accurately reflects a part time job. Rather than the full time effort I had put in doing the work of this township. Despite this unfortunate circumstance, I remain committed to being accessible. And responsive to both public and staff. So it's a. Her wording is a compromise position wording. And I would support this. And I'm prepared to move the motion. As I just read it with the proposed wording that Mary Gillis has suggested.
But this determination came from the board. I would, I would just to get it on the table, I would support the motion. Sorry, John.
Under discussion, the only my, the one when I saw this, I saw that I feel more accurately reflects. I don't know if that's how Jillian really.
Well, Jillian can tell us.
Yeah, no, it doesn't because the board. You brought back after the salary was approved. After you accepted all of your salary increases two weeks later with an ambush. And the board based over and over again, board members. Part time supervisors, part time supervisors, part time supervisors, part time.
Which is different than the decision and in a misrepresentation.
You made the decision based on your reasoning. It was part time.
A misrepresentation of the public record is unacceptable. I I will ask though, Jillian, is there any part of this as a starting point? Is there any part of it that you can work with? I know you and Mary have had conversations about this.
We haven't had any conversation.
You haven't?
No.
Why?
Because it was yesterday that she sent this to me after she had a final.
She she um it was in the board packet on Wednesday and she shared with the board that um you had instructed her, no, no edits.
Right, because I had gone through and edited and it was fine and I sent it over to her. So but I didn't hear it back from her until yesterday.
Okay, so when I read it, I jumped out, you know, as the person who takes the minutes, that was obviously a. Misrepresentation of the proceeding, so um I asked.
It was the understanding.
There, okay, so so let's try to find a solution.
So I wasn't misrepresenting anything on purpose. I was, that was the understanding based on. The salary was approved at thirty four thousand for a part time supervisor.
I'd like to get it to be a factually accurate statement. I think there's fifty different ways you could do that. Um please propose one.
We can just quote the motion.
I can't, what is that? Oh, that's, that just says resulting, you started.
The motion was just to reject the compensation commission. Uh recommend determination regarding a supervisor's salary. That's what that was. And and but but which leads to her not being here, which leads to residents not.
John, that's the first part is the fact, whatever opinion she has about that is hers to write about. But the fact of what the board vote was is what the board vote was.
Okay, no, I I agree, so.
Those are separate.
Does she get to write what the decision was and say, based on my, based on not my not being compensated?
John, that's a, of course she gets to write whatever opinion. The problem is the fact.
Well, I don't want that either. Uh, you know, I mean.
Well, I know, but the, but when you ask, doesn't she?
Well, we want that.
I, it assumes a different argument that is not there. It's kind of a weird question. Kathy has on the table that motion.
But I think.
I have supporting. It looks like Jillian's looking at some things that might get us there.
This is a winter issue, right?
Summer.
Winter newsletter?
Summer.
Ninety five degrees in Maine.
Thank you, John.
Jillian, are you trying to?
Come up with a solution.
Come up with something that might work. Cause I'd rather it be yours than someone else's. Well, she's ready. It's a planned order. Can I ask what the next agenda item is?
K K seven and Christie just um notified me that um we could, um when we get to it, we could table it until July.
We do have additional time.
It's it's not due.
Not to August twenty second.
Okay, that's right.
One other issue while we're on the newsletter. Christie, I know, I think you and I talked about the doc gov article or was that?
Mary's handling that.
Oh, Mary's handling that doc of issue. Very good, just wanted to make sure.
And and Julio has been in communication with Granicus on time and things like that.
I just want to make sure.
I gave him.
We took it, we took it and did whatever we need to do with it if it wasn't gonna be.
Yeah.
Yeah, good.
Think of it, Granicus. And I have a tutorial on how to.
Yeah.
True.
Written down on a piece of paper, click here.
Yeah.
No, we don't, we don't do those.
Thank you.
We do hands on training.
Yeah, it's all hands on.
Brian said, look, it's really easy, I think.
I I would also say on this item, if if we could just talk on this item not to get into the substance, but. I would direct Kathy, um if you'd be willing to modify your motion a bit to fit into. Some of the model motion, which would include to approve the publication of the summer two thousand and twenty five issue of the township newsletter. With the understanding that non substantive changes or corrections will be added, I would insert by the newsletter editor. Before it is sent to the printer and that, and then we're gonna fill in the blank here. Is everybody comfortable with that?
In that way.
Whatever we. Resolve to do here. Potential on a change to those words in that article. Yeah, yeah. You'll have to remake.
Remake the whole.
We're gonna have to put this all together and see if you still have a little bit.
Okay. Still doesn't sit right, but it's better.
See what you got, so Kathy. Wait a minute, you got it. Could I, can I help us along?
Yes.
Okay, a potential motion that Kathy may make might be. To approve the publication of the summer two thousand and twenty five issue of the township newsletter with the understanding that non substantive. Non substantive changes or corrections will be added by the newsletter editor before it is sent to the printer. And that the newsletter editor is directed to make one substantive change. To the article quote, a message from your supervisor end quote, which to replace. Oh, I'll I'll just say it's actually redlined in there. Article in quote, a message from your supervisor end quote to be, get away Kathy.
Well, everything's, you can finish reading it because I, everything's mixed up here now.
Okay, so so the 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 change would be, um you wanna read the new paragraph, Jillian?
You read it.
In and that would replace that first sentence there, right? Under supervisor availability instead of please note.
Yeah, it'll replace, just replace the whole thing.
So it'll replace that paragraph. Okay, would you please read it?
Please note that at the March eleventh Board of Trustees meeting, the salary determination proposed for the position of supervisor. By the compensation commission was rejected. By a five to, oh, you're writing this down?
I'm listening.
Oh, I have five to vote of the board. The resulting salary of forty four thousand is one that I feel more accurate accurately reflects a part time job. Rather than the full time effort I put in doing the work of this township. Despite this unfavorable circumstance, I remain committed to being accessible and responsive to both public. And staff, you can connect or you can um contact me. Monday through Friday because you can't reach me if I'm not here and at least you can email or phone. Leave a message. And I will get, I will, you can, excuse me, you can connect or you can contact me Monday through Friday during regular business hours. With my phone number and email address. I will gladly respond as soon as I'm available.
Is that the most acceptable? I would support that.
Right, yeah.
Okay, so there's a motion on the table by Knoll um support by Flintoff. I would note it was just two minor changes from what we started with, so. That's great. Thank you, Jillian. Um a roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Um Yeho?
Yes.
Flintoff? Yes, Grant?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Carrie?
Sure.
Yes, uh motion adopted unanimously, seven zero.
We'll do a call phone until July eighth uh agenda item page seven.
Support.
We got the Karen Woodman.
It will move to the top. I cannot guarantee for the other. It'll move to the top of unfinished business. Anything you table for the next meeting goes to unfinished.
Oh, here. Did that have to be the second unfinished business item?
Yeah, it'll be the second unfinished business. You wanna call the. To postpone case seven until July eighth.
And there was some uh support?
Yeah, motion by Riser, support by Flint. Yeah, motion by Riser, support by Flintoff.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, none, motion passes. They know it's time for a public comment and there is one person, no. Um, anyone online?
Uh, yes, first off is Paula Gloverston. Go ahead, Paula.
Yeah, I just unmuted. I wanna thank Ryan Yable again for the investments and the, even tonight, reading off the captures. Uh, I've personally been very concerned for a long time about the millages and uh, not apparent to voters about what is going where. And then secondly, this discussion of the, well, I also wanna thank the Finks and Fink for protecting us a liability, whether it be uh, Lhasa. I watched the Lhasa. I, I've been concerned about Lhasa. And, um, thirdly, I want to state during the Compensation, uh, discussion, um, historically, and I've been in the township since, uh, eighty-seven. And this was based with Will Hathaway and Spalding Clark lowering their salaries because historically it has been a part-time job. And I also want to state that a suggestion was made if Supervisor Carrie was spending extra time on, uh, according to municipal law, she could log those hours and get paid, come to the board and ask for payment for those. And I also think there were many factors, even though I personally feel that I didn't walk around with a cast on because Will Hathaway uh, with, and it hadn't to do with the Compensation Committee. I did not particularly like to see that eighty-six percent increase. Uh, there were many factors involved in the discussion that I watched. And you could say fortunately or unfortunately, I watch many meetings and I wanna thank it, but it wasn't just that your sup, your, your position is part-time. No one else said that. I think then myself not wanting to be a charter township and increase my taxes. So thank you and appreciate you listening to me. And, uh, I like the transparency of our board. That's why I say it's the best board. And I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thanks, Paula.
Anyone else that would like to speak to public comment? Uh, Rob Pattinson said, go ahead, Rob.
Thank you, Rob Pattinson, SiO Township President. On the DDA item, I will remind you that just last year, we spent one point four million dollars and I think it was about a three-quarter mile section of one side of Jackson Boulevard. So, yes, the DDA has a lot of money in the bank, but also Jackson Road maintenance is going to be very expensive uh, for the transit, um, millage. I would also acknowledge that about ninety percent of the transit, um, actions in SiO Township happen in the DDA. So keeping, uh, the DDA, keeping the transit capture of that millage, um, seems reasonable. I would remind all of you for the fifth or sixth time that, um, every single one of you has forgotten to turn on your microphones today. And then you forget to be close enough to them so that we can hear you. That is a constant problem. For five years, we got out of the habit of turning on microphones because we had the ceiling microphones from the new audio-visual system, but I will tell you that when the Dais microphones are on, the ceiling microphones are turned off by the AV system. And it takes a few seconds when somebody is speaking out in the audience. It takes a few seconds for it to transfer over from the Dais microphones to the ceiling microphone. So we often miss what is happening there. In particular, Mariah speaks very quietly and we can't hear what she's saying. So could we please get a microphone for that table, um, Mariah? Um, and then, uh, uh, Kathy, I said this to Kathleen, uh, last time. Highlighting when the supervisor interrupts you while ignoring when the rest of you interrupt each other. You all constantly interrupt each other and you do yourself no good um, highlighting and targeting one person and highlighting that they're interrupting. You yourself interrupted people tonight and it's just not fair and you, you, you don't do yourself any favor by highlighting that. As for this final item tonight, tonight, I am too upset to speak about that. But I will say that is dirty trick number eleven. And when I can write civilly about it, I will write to this board and highlight what I saw tonight. I'm so disappointed in members of this board. And that's all I can say.
Chrissy, anyone else?
Thanks, Rob.
Thank you, Rob.
You can public comment? There are no hands raised.
Motion to adjourn.
Yeah, what time, support?
Eleven fifteen.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose. Done, motion passes.